This is this chance that I have to bring it up to you guys. Uh, there's been some talk about increasing license numbers uh for the commercial clam digging in Pine Point and Scarborough. And I just wanted to voice my opinion that as a clamor since, you know, for six or seven years now, um, I think that would be a terrible mistake and really wouldn't benefit the clamors, um, or the clams in any way. And, uh, I hope that when the topic does come up, you choose to, you know, not increase clam license numbers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else I'd like to get up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Mo Erickson and I live at 288 Pine Point Road also. Um, I am coming up here because there are two things I want to talk about, probably neither of them you're even going to address tonight, but I know I read in the Leader the other day about the eight hundred or so residence, uh, units being proposed to the town. And, um, when I hear of that and I hear about the new safety committee, I mean, the safety building and expanding that whole police fire station, I think to myself, where's our pool? I want a pool in Scarborough. I want a pool. I'm not alone. Everyone wants a pool. I think everyone could agree that this town needs a pool. We are shipping our kids off to Cape and Bitterford and everywhere else. We are the nine oh, two one oh of Maine. Why don't we have a pool? I think if we're gonna, if we are gonna insist upon adding more and more housing to this town, let's have a benefit from it all. I think a pool is something that everyone, most people, old, young, would enjoy. You get revenue from, uh, swim lessons, from all, all kinds of things. So I beg you guys, please, put in a pool. That's my first gripe. My second is I know that, um, down in Pine Point where I live, and I grew up and I lived there all my life, that there's a new, um, restaurant that's gonna be going in at Conroy's. And I know that you have heard me complain to you for the last three years about the parking on the Pine Point Road, but no one can get anything done because the DOT gets involved in it. It's a depart, it's a main state road. But all of a sudden, the Baileys have bought Conroy's and the DOT has miraculously given them parking so they can have more parking for that restaurant. I don't know where the entrance is gonna be, where the exit's gonna be, but I can tell you, at that rotary, it's going to be a colossal mess. And just mark my words, it's gonna be horrific. So I beg you again, you have five or six months until parking starts on the Pine Point Road. Fix it. Stop letting people park there. It's gonna be a horror show. Also, I don't know how the Baileys got that, all that extra, well, I won't say all, but their extra parking, but I just wish that we could find a way to fix that rotary because it's gonna be a mess this summer. And none of you guys live down there, I don't believe. So if you're there on a, really on any Sunday, any Saturday, any sunny day from the Fourth of July until Labor Day weekend, you, you gotta go down there and see what I'm talking about. Otherwise, you really have no idea. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else I'd like to speak from the public? Going once, twice, we'll move on. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, moving on to item number five, minutes from December seventh, two thousand and sixteen, the will of the council.
So moved.
Second. Any adjustments or items of correction for the clerk? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Well, that's unanimous. And item number six, adjustments to the agenda. I do not have any this evening. Item seven is, um, charge us warrants. We'll sign those as we go along through the meeting. And we'll move on to the first order of business, order number sixteen dash oh eight oh. It's a seven o'clock public hearing and action on the following applicants who have applied for renewal of the manufactured housing community licenses. The first, um, um, community is Crystal Springs Manufactured Housing Community on U.S. Route twenty-two, Pine Crest Manufactured Housing Community at one twenty-six U.S. Route one, and Hill Crest Manufactured Housing, one twenty-six U.S. Route one. Any comments from the town manager before we move forward?
No, uh, other than the code, uh, code office has inspected them and we do recommend approval.
And is there a motion from the floor?
So moved.
Second. Oh, I apologize before, so, um, I do need to open up for a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the item? Not seeing any, um, motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Hayes. Any comments from council?
Everything, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, counselor.
Um, to the town clerk, everything's up to date as usual with them, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I see no reason for this not to move forward either.
Any other comments or questions?
Assistant aside, it's really not as usual. Uh, the council might recall, Crystal Springs has been a challenge for us through the years. And, um, we're pleased to report, frankly, during my tenure here, this might be the first year that it comes to you with a clean, uh, recommendation from us. So we're very pleased, uh, having worked with them.
Usually we have to wait. We, yeah, usually we wait for them.
Excellent. Any other comments? Not seeing any. All in favor? That's seven, that's unanimous. Order number sixteen dash oh eight one, it's a seven o'clock public hearing and discussion on the renewal request for a food handler's license for Michael Hogland doing business as Countryside Butchers and the Painted Turtle located at eighty-nine County Road. And I'd like to open up the floor to, uh, public comments. Anybody that would like to speak? If you can step up to the podium?
Ben Howard, Seven Windsor Pines. I just had a question reading through the documentation. On December fifth, uh, it was noted that, uh, the Painted Turtle and I, I don't know what the Butchers Stores would be, uh, billed three hundred dollars for each day they were out of violation. And then in the later documentation on December sixteenth, they were just going to pay a penalty of three hundred dollars. Um, to me, those are two very large differences as it seemed in the documentation that it was proven that it, it, it was trying to make a point that the Painted Turtle did receive every notification from the town that the information, uh, about their violations, um, was going to eighty-nine County Road and they do receive their mail there. So I was wondering, is it just the three hundred dollars or is it gonna be the three hundred dollars plus every day in violation? Because to me, three hundred dollars seems, uh, a little bit on the lenient side for the number of days that they were out of violation. And from what I could read, the, um, from my understanding, their, uh, idea of dodging sort of the towns' pleas to, for them to get into code and to get their license renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. Larry Hartwell, and I'm Puritan Drive, Scarborough. Um, I'd certainly, uh, second his comments. I thought in that letter it did say you could cha, charge him up to three hundred dollars a day. And the way it's written, it appears at the three hundred dollars, two thousand. Uh, this is, as the letter says, it is willful, uh, neglectery. Uh, it's gone six months without the license. Uh, we can't seem to put lights in the, in the emergency exits. We can't seem to, uh, fix and replace fire extinguishers after six months. Uh, I would certainly suggest that you have a, a larger, uh, fine or whatever you want to call it than, than three hundred dollars. I think that's just, um, an embarrassment, if you will. And my question is, uh, if the person is not in compliance by February, does it, the place automatically shut down or does it have to come back to council? And my answer to my own question is, given the amount of time and thumbing its nose, the person thumbing their nose at the town, trying to work with them, uh, I think it should be automatic if it can be. Um, there's certainly been a lot of effort put in by the town. Uh, and one time, my parents had a, a connoisseur. We sold fruits and vegetables and so forth. You want to make sure that stuff is helped, that it's, is dealt with properly, that it's a safe environment. And, uh, we certainly read all the time about other businesses, people like that, for some reason, which, you know, is alien, I'm sure, to everyone here, uh, they choose not to do it. I just don't understand it and, uh, I think the person's had more than enough time to correct these. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else I'd like to speak on the item? Anybody else? Not seeing any. Before I turn it over to the council for motion and conversation, I'd like to have the manager answer some of those questions for us.
Sure. Zoning Administrator, um, Brian Longstaff is here and has been working directly on this matter and perhaps I, I would flip it over to him just for more substance, but as he takes the podium, uh, just as a general rule, staff, uh, we do try to be lenient. These are local businesses. We certainly, uh, do everything in our power to make sure they're safe environments, but also the businesses are able to continue operating. And so, uh, I, I believe it's possible the fine amount could be higher, uh, but that's kind of the perspective that we bring this recommendation to you with. And if you'll allow, Brian, I think you'll provide some more detail.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, um, Tom. Uh, yeah, to respond to some of the, the public comments, uh, the ordinance does say that the, uh, the town can levy a fine of up to three hundred dollars a day. It doesn't say it must. Um, and that's for the first offense. Uh, it can, for a subsequent offense, levy a fine of up to five hundred dollars per day. Um, and again, that's the second offense. It doesn't say it must. And I think, I don't believe this business has been, um, assessed a penalty, um, at least in my tenure here. And this is, so this is why we are instituting a fine of a three hundred dollars, just to let them know that we are serious. My personal philosophy is that I would rather have him correct, put the money into correcting the deficiencies to make it safe for the public, to be there, rather than to penalize them with a lot of penalties and not get the work done that needs to be done. Subsequently, then, we're gonna keep, uh, as you noticed in the memo, the third condition was that we do an interim inspection, which we don't normally do, which is usually an annual inspection. I'd like to do an interim inspection with the, the council's help of putting that condition on the business to make sure that he is toeing the line, that the restaurant is safe, that the butcher shop is, is, um, keeping these systems up to date, um, and serviced, um, and light, hubs and lights and, and so on and so forth. So, yeah, we're gonna start paying a lot more attention, um, to those businesses, not just this business, but those businesses that are sort of chronic abusers. There aren't that many. Um, most people, as, as the gentleman said, um, you know, take that responsibility seriously and keep the public's, uh, health and safety and welfare, um, you know, at the forefront. This business hasn't done as good a job as some, um, obviously. But we'd rather see him fix, we'd rather stay on him to fix and put the money into the building and get those systems corrected, rather than slap them with a lot of money in fines. The next time it happens, yeah, we'd probably be coming to the council for a little bit more of a, a penalty.
Thank you very much. Um, before we, uh, if there's any questions for staff, um, if they can have a motion from the floor?
So moved.
Move to approve with conditions as recited in the attached material.
Would you like to second that?
Second.
Thank you. Um, questions for staff from council?
I do. Um, I don't know him. Um, do you feel like he is going to, if we grant this and this is, has he seen these conditions?
Yes. I spoke with, uh, he actually, I haven't seen him. I spoke with him by the, by telephone today to read down through the, the conditions that I was proposing. I informed him that the council didn't necessarily have to follow my recommendations. Uh, and they certainly could, could come up with more stringent ones, although that was probably not likely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, I, uh, I did go through them and he didn't have any objection to them. He was a little bit taken back by the penalty, which is the effect that I wanted.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and did you feel as though he was going to be compliant with those?
Time will tell.
Yeah. Um, I think it's important too to state to the public that it's not just businesses that we've been lenient with on the first time. We've also done it with, with personal housing, where we've had issues with people that, um, their homes are not up to code. We've tried to help them also. So it's not just a business per se that we've done this for. Um, and I have to agree with you that the ordinance does state that we can charge up to that, um, but we're not held to that. Um, and I have to agree with you. I think, you know, first, this is the first offense. Um, you know, some of these issues are obviously, um, serious and need to be handled, but I do agree with you that we should give him the opportunity, um, and the resources, he needs to use his resources to take care of these issues. I would hate to see that building, um, vacant and, um, lose two businesses out of Scarborough. Um, I do know people that frequent both of those businesses and really love them. Um, so it would be, um, my hope that the council would support your recommendations and that we get an update from you immediately, um, if he fails to do these things. And it would be my impression, I would have no leniency the second time, the second time. I would, it would be my personal opinion that we impose all strict fines to the maximum, um, whether that shuts him down or not. He should not be allowed to have a business if he cannot keep our residents safe.
Uh, Councilor Kaslow is next and, yes.
Uh, yeah, I noticed, uh, you sent a letter out on December fifth and he said you, uh, Mr. Hogland had twenty-four hours to contact the Department of Planning Codes. He did not do that, is that correct?
Um, from the time of receipt, we sent it certified mail, um, the, because the letter was actually sent to the address that we had on file, which we're now told was the incorrect address. We corrected that. He got the letter on the eighth, signed for the receipt on the eighth and contacted us on the ninth.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilor Donovan?
Uh, Condition one states, uh, Mr. Hogland must complete the remaining corrective actions by January eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. Should Mr. Hogland fail to correct all remaining violations by this date, the council shall suspend or revoke the food handler's license. Uh, in writing that, was it your intention that it would be automatic or that it would come back to us at our meeting following January eighteenth?
Yeah, I think the way it's worded, it would have to come back to you, um, although we would be tracking his progress. Given the fact that some of this work has to be done by outside sourcing in the holiday season, I wanted to make sure I, I didn't set him up to fail.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because he's at the whim of their schedule, not necessarily his, his schedule. This isn't stuff he can do himself, uh, some of it. Most, actually, everything that's left is not stuff that he can do himself. So he is at the whim of other service providers, so I want to make sure, like I said, I don't want to set him up to fail. I want him to, to do it. So I think if the eighteenth rolls around and he can show me a, a, a contractual agreement that the guy isn't gonna be there till the twenty-first, that's the date, I, I'd probably give him that. And then if that failed, then we'd be coming back to council for, for that revocation.
Any other council questions?
Actually, I have a question, if you don't mind. Um, so just for the public's, um, edification, food handler's licenses come to us annually for approval, um, or new ones do. However, the renewal of them are generally handled by the town clerk automatically. So this is coming to us solely because there is a continued issue with the, uh, the license, correct? Uh, yes. Because he failed to renew, it's treated as a new, a new application. Sure. So the question, um, so, um, the reason why I asked that question, um, I kind of knew it ahead of time, was that, um, the tone of the letter suggests that there's a historical behavior problem with the applicant or the licensee that has never been shared with us before because that's automatically handled. So I don't want anyone to think that the council has been, um, permissive of that type of behavior because I don't think it's appropriate that a well str, a well-known business in town that's been here for many years, it's not like it's a new one that doesn't know how to do business, can behave that way. So I hope that, once this is resolved, the behavior also changed with that flexibility that we've given and that we don't have to go through that experience for our staff as well. Yeah, that's kind of the effect I'm trying to have in this case. Like, um, there has been assorted history with this business, but it's been mostly with the, uh, annual inspections and the follow-throughs, uh, by the fire department and just, just generally kind of a slow response from the, from the business. We have a few that, that are that way. Um, again, it's not, not necessarily widespread. There are a few problem children, if you will, that we have to deal with over and over again, and that's been the case with this, but it hasn't had to come to council for, uh, before this time. And I did want to mention, it wasn't that long ago, we also had another business that was an eatery that had a similar issue regarding some violations that went through this process with you and was very successful, if I remember correctly. Yep. I'm failing to remember which one you're talking about.
I'll tell you later. I, I, the seafood joint on Pine Point Road. Um, any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Uh, the will of the council, all of those in favor? That appears to be unanimous. Thank you. And, uh, moving on to old business, there is none at this time. Under new business, we have order number sixteen dash oh eight eight. It is the first reading of the Eighth Amendment to Contract Zone Nine by the residents at Gateway Commons Divine Capital LLC, formerly New England Expedition pursuant to Chapter four oh five two, uh, I guess that would be, it's Chapter four oh five, Section Two, Subsection One, Five and C of the Scarborough zoning ordinance and referral to the planning board for further review. What I would like to do, um, if you don't mind, um, is first, I wanted to give a small background on the contract. We normally have public comments, um, before, um, the presentation. What I would actually like to ask is that we actually have the public comments after the presentation so that they get to see the full presentation. Um, but in conjunction with that, I really wanted to provide, I had asked the manager about providing at least a little bit of a timeline because this project has been, um, or the, the issue of this project has been in our coffers for quite a few, uh, years. And so I just wanted to give a high-level background about the entire project, including its previous owners. So in Sept, or in, um, January of two thousand and seven, it tells you how long it's been, a decade, that this was an initial contract between Scarborough and, um, what was then the Gateway Shops at Scarborough. In September of that same year, there were modifications to the provisions for signage. In November, there was additional, um, provisions made for, to add educational institutions into the zone. There was also additional, uh, May two thousand and eight modifications for signage and banners and light poles. In September two thousand and nine, was not necessarily an amendment, but the Gateway Square property was conveyed by quitclaim deed to the New England Expedition, uh, Two Group. And then in March two thousand and ten, we extended a sustainability, uh, substantially complete deadline to March of two thousand and thirteen. So we gave them three years to move to a substantially complete phase. In July of two thousand and ten, we also added additional specifications to support the program, uh, excuse me, the project. And then additional signage specifications were changed in two thousand and eleven. The actual transfer of ownership, um, to Gate, of Gateway Square transferred in two thousand and fifteen, and here we are in two thousand and seventeen, now talking about what more can we do to support the project. So with that, I just wanted to kind of give a high-level overview of the timeline that we've incurred up to now, um, and then turn this over to Tom for introductions and the presentation.
Right. Uh, just to, one further piece of history, uh, none of the history really is relevant to this project, it's worth noting, but there is, uh, there's ten years or better of history. It is important for folks to remember kind of the, why there's a contract zone there in the pla, in the first place. And it really had to do with the Cabela's store being of its size. It, uh, I think the requirement was a twenty thousand square foot retail limitation at the time. This is a hundred and thirty thousand square foot building, so obviously they needed some relief there. The council at the time, I think, had the wisdom of saying, retail's all well and good, but we really want to, uh, see some results in commercial development a, along the Parkway. And so the property that we're gonna be talking about tonight is the so-called, or former Gateway Square property. And, uh, and the contract zone extends to both the shops and the squares. And there was a lot of incentives worked into that to encourage development on this property. Unfortunately, ten years in, uh, infrastructure's been put in place, but there's no, uh, there's been no development to date. So that's kind of the, the back history, if you will. And, uh, this evening, representatives from Divine Capital are here tonight. They promised to be fifteen minutes or so, and I, I think it's probably best that they do proceed with the presentation first. I am hopeful that they'll potentially answer many questions you have, but if not, I'm sure they'll be willing to take questions. And we have a number of staff resources here, uh, should the council need it as you proceed.
Um, hey, thanks, Tom. Uh, my name is Ben Divine and I'm representing, uh, the development group, uh, in our proposal for, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight, um, multi-apartments, uh, at the Higginson Parkway. Um, my development partner is KGI, um, and they're, they're here tonight, uh, just Rick Renera and Dave Yeton. Um, you should be familiar with our group. KGI and Divine Capital developed, uh, Scarborough Gallery, uh, some ten years ago. Uh, that was Walmart Supercenter, the Lowe's, uh, the Red Robin. Um, we worked, it was about a two to three-year project on sixty-plus acres. Uh, worked very closely with the town. We're very proud of that project. Um, uh, the, the, uh, interaction between, um, staff and, uh, and development team was terrific and, uh, that's a good project. Um, we come here today, uh, to do a, a very, very brief overview. Uh, I understand what this is, is for, uh, first reading of the Eighth Contract Zone Amendment. And as Tom has introduced it, uh, you folks are very familiar with this, this contract zone. We're seeking, I think, very modest, um, amendment to allow the vision of what the Higginson Parkway should be, which is a sort of a vibrant, uh, multi-use area. And so, uh, I'd like to, uh, show you what our vision is and ask that you, uh, that you'll listen to us and, uh, and, uh, support us as, as we move forward. Again, we understand that this is, if we get through tonight, this is just the beginning of the project. We'll be back in front of the, uh, uh, planning board, open for public hearings, town council, and, uh, we know it's very, we've worked in Scarborough before, we know it's, it's a very thorough process. Um, Tom gave a, a brief history on the background and it's, it's really our position that this contract, the Eighth Contract Zone Amendment, really does fit with what the folks, uh, that drafted this zoning, uh, back ten years ago envisioned. Sort of a vibrant, uh, multi-use development. I don't think they saw this as strictly a residential play, but I think they saw that this area should be, uh, sort of work, play, live, and that we believe that, given the fact that it's two thousand and sixteen, uh, this project that we're bringing forth really fits with that vision. The site's probably the most studied site in southern Maine. I, I know there's, uh, Fairchild had looked at the site. Um, that's back in the day when suburban office parks were popular. TD Bank, it just, I, I know from a retail's perspective, there's been a lot of retailers that have looked at it and just given the fact that it's two thousand and sixteen, um, that particular, uh, uh, type of development, the mu, uh, suburban office, large box retail, that's evaporated. And from a company that's just built millions of square feet of it, I don't think it's coming back. And, uh, uh, we think that this product that we're, uh, proposing here, with sort of two hundred and eighty-eight, uh, luxury, uh, multi-apartment units, uh, are gonna really appeal to the town. We're talking about, uh, a development, a product that is going to bring, uh, the educated workforce, we're gonna hear about the demographics, these are teachers, these are, uh, folks working at Maine Med, Hanaford, IDEX. Uh, this is going to, uh, appeal to a, a segment of the residential population that's really choosing not to buy homes. Um, you're gonna hear that it's very little impact on the municipal services, but a lot of benefits from a, a population base that's, that's gonna be terrific for Scarborough. So what I'd like to do, uh, is briefly introduce the team and, and let them sort of respond after, make their, we'll each make a brief presentation, then sort of answer the questions that you must have about a project of this scale, sort of the timeline of it all. But I'd just like to identify folks in the audience here, uh, starting with the, the landowners, uh, Glenn Grant and the Grandins, uh, they have quite a history on the site and could certainly, uh, uh, give you any background about, uh, why they think, I think this is the right project at the right time. We also have, uh, Rick Chaney, who, uh, certainly is a well-known, uh, former chairman of the planning board here and the author of, uh, that Higginson, Higginson Parkway Amendment. And I'm sure he could fill in some, uh, some history about New England Expedition and, uh, why this might, might fit with that, uh, vision. Uh, as far as our great island, as far as our development team of Divine Capital and KGI, Bill Fletcher's our attorney, local. Um, we've got Will Conway from Sebago. Uh, Will is also the engineer on Scarborough Gallery, certainly knows the lay of the land. And, uh, as I said, Rick and David from, um, Will can, can take you through construction, timelines and the like. So, uh, I guess I'm going to, uh, hand it off to Brad Wayman. And Brad's from, uh, Signover Conover Company in, um, Connecticut. And I think we're really, really fortunate to be able to show you exactly what this proposal can look like for Scarborough. This development team just finished two hundred and eighty units of a similar, almost identical project. And so a lot of the questions you have, I think, uh, other planning, another planning board's asked and, and Brad's answered. So I'd like him just to kind of run through what, what the residents at, uh, Gateway Commons would look like.
Well, Brad takes the stage. Please, go ahead, Brad. Um, there is a letter that was provided at your place this evening. It's, uh, it's from a zoning official from Eastline, Connecticut, that, uh, perhaps speaks to many of the points that we'll hear right now as well.
You'll see it on the screen in one second.
You'll see it on the screen in one second. Kind of a presentation that we have that walks you through Eastline. They're very, very similar communities to Scarborough. They're seaside communities where population increases significantly during the summer months. The median income is almost identical. The school system, size of the school system, student population is almost identical. So there's a lot of, real lot of similarities. A major highway passes through that has close proximity exit and entrance ramps for ours, for the site in Eastline, as it does at Scarborough. So what I'd like to do is talk to you about the type of resident that we have seen, the resident profile that we have in Eastline, is that they're lifestyle renters. They are making a conscious decision to rent and not buy. So they're millennials, they're baby boomers, they're retirees that want a very highly amenitized living situation. They have, we have onsite pools, we have fire pits, we have dog washes, we have places to wash your car, we have a whole host of it, a gym, movie theater indoors. So there's all these, they're choosing to live in this location, in this type of style housing, and not buy. So they're, the rentals, the rental price point on these, that when we built this is, it's somewhere between $1,400 and $2,000, $200 a month, which is, we find that's, it's very acceptable. We're looking at a median income on most of the residents that are at Gateway, it's somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000, some over that, for their, for the units. There was a lot of concern with the town about the impact on the school system. So the 288 units that are built now, they're 90% occupied. We have had, we have a population of under 21 of 23 people. Of those 23, eight of them are infants, so there's 13 children that have impacted the school system. The town had originally, we had provided them studies that said there would be 50 students that would impact the school system. We found that not to be true. And what we've also found is that, of that new student population, it's not new. There's been a movement within the town of people that chose to stay in town and live in, live in an apartment community, or in the case of a split family, the, one of the parents might now live in this and want to keep their kid and child in the same school system, so now they can take the bus to this property, or bus to where their original home had been. So we're finding out the actual impact of new students of the 13 is either six or seven. So it's been very, very minimal impact on the school system, are what we found. We've also found that it's very important to be able to supply this type of amenity package. You have a minimum of 250 units, because you need to supply on, significant onsite staff for leasing, for maintenance of the facilities. They're used to a very high level of service. Every, all hallways are vacuum on a daily basis. We have granite countertops, there's all stainless steel appliances, there's plank flooring in the unit. So as you can see on your screens right there, there is a very high level of finish that is expected in these units for this type of renter. We've also seen from the town, and as from that letter, we have, we have a very long, extensive relationship with the town, is that they've noticed this fairly significant, what we call a multiplier effect, of these people that are living in the community have very high disposable income. So they're using that disposable income to eat at the local restaurants, to shop at the local stores. A lot of that is staying within the local community. It's not being exported out of the community, which we think is a huge plus to keep building that fabric of community. So I would, I would end with that, we first approached Eastline, and we had standing room only in the high school to talk about the project. And by the time the project actually started, we had a line of people standing there to support the project. And now, as you can see what's been built there, the town has been extremely supportive. It's a very high-quality, very high amenity package. We actually have a number of people that work within the town living there. With that, I am going to turn it over to Will, who's going to talk about some of the traffic considerations and the revenues that would be generated for the town through the impact fees, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. I'm going to use a lot of numbers tonight, so, but before I do that, I'd just like to make some points about, the project will have very little impact on municipal services. Brad mentioned the low school impacts. All of the roadways will be private within the development, so there'll be no snow removal on the part of the town. Trash removal will be handled privately, so no impact on the town in that respect. And based on the demographics, this is a young, healthy population, so there'll be limited impacts on emergency responders within the town, based on the, the type of project being proposed. The other thing that you all know is, many years ago, the town made a substantial investment in Hagus Parkway. It's roadway and utility infrastructures, and really not a lot has happened there, with the exception of Cabela's and a few businesses along it. This will provide, you know, I think, sort of fits with the vision of what the town assumed that investment would return on, on the investment itself. In terms of traffic impacts, the project is currently permitted with significant retail office uses. And those traffic trips generated will go way down with this project. And here I go with some numbers. In the AM peak hour, the traffic will be reduced from 502 trips to 158. In the PM peak hour, will be reduced from 790 trips to 188. So much less traffic impact on, on your roadway system. In terms of financial benefits to the town, there's lots of them. And I'll start with the annual property tax revenue from this project is expected to generate $475,000 to $635,000 annually to the town. In addition to that, as part of the conditions, we're hopeful to, that you'll send us to see the planning board that will impose as part of site plan review. There are impact fees on the, the traffic, even though it's, it's little, there'll still be impact fees, recreation fees, school impact fees, and sewer impact fees, which are considerable. The project will generate a total of $1.55 million in impact fees. That's a one-time fee, not, this is in addition to annual tax revenue. So quite a bit of, you could build a few swimming pools for that. In addition, and I don't have any numbers on this, this vehicle, inspection fees or registration fees will be considerable, perhaps north of $100,000 annually, we think. And then, it's, it's hard to speculate, but there'll be during construction, construction jobs generated, as well as people using local services, restaurants, and other services within the town as a benefit. And the last point I'd like to make is, this is a shovel-ready project. The next group is going to talk about the timeframe. The timing of the project is important, and as you've seen in the slides, and if you've been to the site, considerable infrastructure's already in place. A major loop road is in, utilities are in, the stormwater detention facilities are built. So we would be able to mobilize and, and realize these benefits for you in a very short order. So with that, I'd like to introduce Rick Grenere from KGI, and he'll talk about schedule.
Timing is pretty critical, and the way we look at this project is that because it's a destination location with a very high amenity package, that would be the first item that we'd want to get built. And if you take a look in the unrealistic, maybe, timeline of a developer, we, if we had permits by June of next year, the idea would be, we'd be in the ground in the second half of 2017. So the 288 units that we're looking for, those take about six to nine months to come online. So the first units available would be the spring of 2018. So initially, we'd probably need 90 permits, 90 growth permits, to get through the first year in 2017, to pull the, the building permits to get going on the first half of the project. As the rentals start in 2018, we would be working on the second half, and in 2018, we would need the second half of the growth permits. The entire project takes about two years to fully finish up. What's good is that these are real dates, real time numbers, real schedules, because this is not a hypothetical theory that we're proposing, we just finished it. And it took us two years to complete the project, we fine-tuned it, we did a few things that we've learned to do better from Eastline that we would propose here, and one is get the amenity package built right away, because we had that wait. But with the winters here, if we start in the summer of 2017, you're not going to open a pool in December, or, you know, we'll have to wait, but it all works out that the timing will run two years. Six to nine months for the first apartments to come onboard. With that, turn it over to Bill.
I shouldn't have been handed the technology baton, clearly. I'm Bill Fletcher, I'm the attorney on the team. So you've heard about the project, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the current zoning and what we're asking for in the Eighth Amendment to the contract zone, and then talk just for a minute about the process. The property is within the Hagus Parkway District. It's also part of a contract zone area, and the history has already been given, so I won't, I won't walk through that. But there are certain aspects of the, the Hagus District that we would need relief from in order to go forward with this project. One is the density requirement. Currently, under the district, only five units are allowed per net lot acre of area. So for this site, we estimate that about 125 units would be its limit without this, without this amendment to the contract zone. And also, there's a mixed-use requirement under the district. So presently, you can only build residential units if you have a commercial component. And in the marketplace today, that just isn't feasible. So those are the two primary aspects that the contract zone seeks to remedy. And the third component is, as contemplated under the growth management ordinance, the town council is allowed to authorize the planning board to issue the appropriate number of growth permits. As Rick mentioned, it isn't a request for 288 permits in the first year. The way the growth permits are calculated, it's a percentage of the overall building permits you're asking for, based on the size of the units you're building. So we estimate in the first year, we would need approximately 90 growth permits, and then the remaining 90 to fall during 2018 and 2019. So the Eighth Amendment to the contract zone really is doing those three things. It's, it's lifting the requirement that the project be mixed-use, it's alleviating or relieving the density requirement, and it's authorizing the planning, planning board to issue the appropriate number of growth permits from the reserve pool in order to allow the project to go forward. What we're asking for tonight is really the first step, it's the first reading. So the, if the council were to vote tonight, it would be recommending that the Eighth Amendment be forwarded to the planning board for review. There'd be a second, there'd be a public hearing, the planning board would receive comments, they would review the Eighth Amendment, they would report back to the town council. At that same meeting, they would simultaneously do a preliminary review of the site plan, and a preliminary approval, subject to the final approval of the Eighth Amendment. At that point, the Eighth Amendment would come back to the town council for a second public hearing and a second reading. Assuming that process finalizes, once the approved contract zone is signed and recorded, the planning board would continue on their, on their process of reviewing the site plan and subdivision. So I believe that concludes our presentation. We'll welcome, welcome any questions you have.
So be, if you don't mind, any comments from staff before, because we did promise to have public comments before we got into our conversation. So any, any closing comments for the presentation?
No, I think the thorough presentation, again, staff can hear and available as resources to you as you go through this discussion.
Excellent, thank you. So I would like to, we will have questions as counselors, so I would like to at least open up the, the floor to any public comments. I'd just like to approach the podium and have those comments, or questions that we'll keep track of and make sure that they're answered.
Yes, my name's Sam, and where I live is the same. Larry Hartwell, Nine Puritan Drive. I live fairly close to where this new project is going in, and I don't have any concerns about it being there. It's the Hagus Parkway, it's supposed to be a commercial area. We've got, you know, they spent millions of dollars on the infrastructure there, they spent millions of dollars on the highway. It used to be just a simple two-lane road intersection there at the turnpike. The toll plaza's been rebuilt. I think these are all positive things. Last week at the, at the workshop, I probably, like many of you, was very surprised, it's the first time I'd heard this number of 800-plus units. And so that was a shock at the beginning. But as I went through the, the program and the presentation, it sounded better, and it seemed like, okay, we're talking about the school, which is the one area that certainly could impact us very big. And Mr. Rizvera got up there, he spent millions of dollars in Westbrook and other places, he was able to give us what's happening today in the marketplace, and, and the, obviously the demand is there for, for this kind of housing. I reviewed, or looked through most of that information that you put up on the website, and I still look, I was looking for a negative, what, you know, what don't I like here, what's, what's a big concern, and I really, you know, I don't know this, Amendment Eight piece, that's for the lawyers to deal with, but I think, and the presentation tonight seemed to fit quite well with what, what we heard last week, and also what was out on the website. We have other pluses in that you've already, we've already, as a town, worked with this developer before. That's certainly a plus, there's always, you know, they know how, how we do business here, they know that it, we just don't let things slide. So I think that's a plus for them, a plus for us. And certainly, you know, the fact that they just built this project, you know, it's just a different, different zip code. And in the building, in the commercial business, certainly building housing, they have to do it now, because the market keeps pivoting and changing. And so, you know, like putting it through the comprehensive planning process, which could take a year, 18 months, 24 months, then it's like TD Bank North, they wanted to build out of the, out there, and I don't know the particulars on that, but it didn't work because certain things had to be done. So I certainly ask you to, to vote in affirmative of this. We really, like they say, it's going to the, the planning board, we'll hear more stuff, more about it there, more questions, and it comes back to you folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else I'd like to speak?
Well, again, Ben Howard, Seven Windsor Pines. To me, when I was reading through the legislation, I was just kind of weary as how the letter was written. One of the first things that popped up to me was millennial. I guess that's sort of what my age group has become, but to me, the idea that this place would cater to millennials, I was a little bit wary of it, from my own personal opinion. That being said, you're expecting, from what I read, it's a little bit different now, you're expecting the income to be about $80,000 to $100,000 for these people. I don't know of many millennials that are making $80,000 to $100,000, especially since, I know you could have a partner or someone that you're living with, and you could share it, but 33% of the housing is single, single-bedroom homes. And even then, the, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Maine's income is 40, average income is $43,000 per year. And we only have, according to that as well, is 600,000 jobs. Now, yes, the demographics are very, very similar between Eastline and Connecticut, based on the breakdown of the population, the age groups and everything, but there's a big difference between Maine and Connecticut. In Connecticut, there's 1.6 million jobs, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and the average income there is $56,000. That's a $10,000 difference. So I, I'm sort of worried that we won't fill this, that, that there's, there will be a difference between Connecticut and, and Maine itself, especially again from the millennial. again from the millennial standpoint. It almost just is a buzzword to the older gen, oh, yes, the young people will come and live in this community. To me, that sort of area doesn't scream it. I really like what's happened downtown here with the school and the Romeo's restaurants and the ma and pa business. And that's something that more millennials like. Over there and over by the Walmart area where we're building these things, it's the big stores, you know, big name brand, Red Robins and other things. So to me, I was a little bit wary of that, wary of that. Again, the promise that, you know, maybe we'll build more retail should the housing market do well enough. There's no promise of this retail coming in. Again, that's just a place. You know, I think 10 years ago, there was a vision and there was goals to do things with it. And I would hope the council would sort of wait until those visions were foreseen. Right now, the area is sort of just getting filled with things, right? There's Horizon Solutions, which is a wire PLC facility sort of deal there. That's a smaller business. And then there's the salt pipe, a rock climbing, a recreational place. But to me, it just seems like the vision for that area has been sort of lost. And I, you know, we do need more housing in Maine. I've looked for housing and it's definitely on the short end, but it takes two years. We're about to go into a whole new presidency. We don't know, really know where the country's going. And I understand, I believe this is my time here. But I'm sorry that I go on, but to me, I would just like to hear more information about exactly who's moved into East Lime. And I want to see more of the data. This is the first time the council has really posted a lot of data and I really appreciate that. So thank you for everything tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else I'd like to speak from the public? Sir?
Good evening. My name's Rick Cheney. Just to be clear, I'm not involved in this project in any legal capacity. I did, was given the opportunity by Attorney Fletcher to review the Eighth Amendment to the contract zone agreement. So there is a little bit of my input there. That was on behalf of the New England Expedition, a company I do represent, which owns the Gateway Shops. Little bit of further history that the chair forgot to mention was this little event in 2008 called the World Recession where our economy practically collapsed everywhere. That was the primary reason why the project then just didn't happen. Fairchild Semiconductor had signed a lease. They were coming to that project. They were going to build a world-class facility. That back then was sort of the vision of the area, high-class office projects. That didn't happen. And unfortunately, the project couldn't go forward again for anything that New England Expedition could do. The vision has changed a lot now, I think, for this area. The shops has some facilities that I'm sure will benefit from this project. The people that will live there will undoubtedly spur further development in the shops, more retail perhaps, more restaurants, other uses that'll cater to these residents. I also think that things will happen at Scarborough Downs in the not-too-distant future. And again, this type of project in that area will support the uses that I think will be built there. So the New England Expedition is a strong supporter of this project. I think you have a letter in your materials hopefully from Mr. Feldman. And I would encourage the council to vote tonight in favor of the amendment and let the process move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else I'd like to speak? Would you like to stand up, sir?
I'm Glenn Grant. Chairman Baybine's looking at me here. We go back a long way. I'm not just part of the public. I'm one of the owners. And if we had two and a half hours, I could lead you through step by step from the time we cut through way through for the turnpike, for the Higginson Parkway, when the state DOT told me that I had 30 days to clear the wood out of the area if I wanted it because it was going to happen. So I informed them there was a cemetery there they might want to know about before they started bulldozing. Anyway, it goes on and on. We have dragged our feet through some of the best potential deals for this land. It is one of the best locations period in New England. Access to the airports, to the sea, to the local routes. It's all good. We went through a downturn in the economy, as Rick said, and New England Expeditions folded. Prior to that, I had signed eight extensions. So it wasn't that we were in a hurry to take and stop the project and ultimately they gave in. And I gave them credit for staying with it so long. What we have now, after all these lapses of different hotspots, whether it's retail or whether it was academia or manufacturing, now we have a need called housing. And the surveys support this and we do too. The funny part is that originally, before the highway went through, the Higginson Parkway, I had a $50,000 check placed in my hand by a local developer, nice guy, Rocko Rizbira, who wanted to build houses there. And I said, what? There should be something else. And there certainly has been. But now you have a shovel-ready piece of property that's been waiting too long. And I say that from the aspect of having to deal with the assessments over the years. The town's been very gracious, but we're up to date. Ben and Company, we chose over an offer from a big developer in Philadelphia and New York who offered to pay much more money, but we wanted local. We have local. He's proven here in Scarborough and all over the place. His associates are proven. You've seen the footwork up here on the screen. And so please give it ample consideration and let this thing get off the ground. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rehearsed that. You're right on Fremont. It's Glenn.
Like he says, he goes way back. Anybody else I'd like to speak? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing or public comments and open it up for questions from councillors. Council Rowan.
So the, I read through the...
Well, I think that we're going to go through some questions for staff regarding any of the data and then we'll go into a conversation. Isn't that how we've typically handled it in the past? We can do it either way?
No, answer questions.
Okay. We can start if we can have a motion on the order, please.
So moved.
Second.
And questions, questions from councillors. Questions, yes.
Yeah. So I had a question. The intention is Divine Capital's going to be the management company for this, Bloomberg?
Yeah, this is a joint venture with KGI and Divine Capital. Just like Scarborough Gallery, we develop and we own. The benefit of this development is our partners here is Simon Conover, one of the largest apartment owners, managers and developers on the East Coast. So they would be professionally managing it.
I see. And you mentioned that when we were talking about the sound in Connecticut?
East Lime, yeah.
In East Lime? Yep. That the rents were from between 1,400 and 2,200. Was that for the same mix of studios through three-bedroom or?
Correct.
Okay. So the three bedrooms were running for about 2,200.
Correct.
So the same level of amenity. Okay. And then another question I have, would be the, what's in front of us tonight is really the decision on the contract zone. Was the, was the growth management ordinance permit considered part of that on the table or is that something to be taken up? A later point.
It's part of the amendment in that it authorizes through the town council, you'd be authorizing the planning board to issue the appropriate growth permits in connection with the project.
Gotcha. So it's all, it was in the head?
And that's, and that authority is embedded within the current growth management ordinance, the authority of the town council to do that.
I just wanted to speak to why that was a requirement of that Eighth Amendment is we do need financing for these projects. And when you get to a lender, they want to know if you have all those permits and they're going to want to know that we have the ability to build X number of units. And there is a, as we study East Lime, Rick and Eric could speak too, we really do need to, say in 2018, have 90 permits, growth permits in order to make the site viable so we can get a loan. And that's kind of how we broke that out.
Gotcha. In any of these developments, you ever done any inclusionary housing for affordable units?
East Lime is not a project that has affordable units, but we are well aware here that part of this planning board process that that's going to be a discussion. I know that's a new topic to the town council. And, you know, we are internally discussing that. Again, this is what we call a luxury apartment, but I'm not sure that that is really relevant. We know that as part of this process, that affordable housing will be discussed.
Great. Thank you.
Any other? Council Kiazou?
So three questions. First one is, have you determined how many parking spaces you offer per unit? Because obviously it varies. You're going from studio to third to three-bedroom. So what's the average, I guess, per unit?
In the project we have in East Lime, we have one-third of garages that represent one-third of the units. And then we typically look at, it was a town ordinance and what we needed to have in East Lime. We actually exceeded that ordinance. We run about two parking spaces per unit. So whether it's a one-bedroom or a three-bedroom, it usually averages out that that's what you need to have. We found that the placement of the parking where they are to the doorway is a fairly important factor in the current population that wants to live there. So.
Yeah, to continue.
Yeah, two other, two other questions. First one, so you did mention the 1,400 to 2,200. Have you done any market surveys here locally to see if the, if the market will support that kind of rate?
We have done an informal market survey in the market that was provided support to that with CB Richard Ellis, who just recently sold two projects in South Portland. And our rents are very much in line with those were. And those were projects that are between 10 and 14 years old. So this would be at a par on the rent side, but have a much more robust amenity package.
I'd also like to take the opportunity to say that, like any real estate, this runs in cycles. So we're obviously anxious to get into the market. This market would serve greater Portland. There are other projects out there. I can't speak to whether they'll all get built. I lived through the suburban office market in the 80s and there was a lot of office buildings, Eagle Brook and the like, that were on the plans and they never got built. So I do have my concerns that although there were 800 apartments or 800 units, residential units in Scarborough, that they'll all get built. But this type of project, if someone were to do this in another community, that would definitely impact us. So timing is critical. Interest rates are rising. Construction costs are rising. We understand this project will be well, well-vetted, but we're anxious to do this, to get in the ground this year.
And if you can wait, there's going to be one more question.
Yeah, sorry. No, this is actually for staff. Have we, has our legal counsel reviewed the zoning amendment change or will we do that during the planning board process?
Town's attorney's been involved in the formation of the amendment in front of you, yes.
And no questions or concerns? Everything's?
Well, really was their work product. We made sure it was intended to do and I believe it's in keeping with what they look for, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Councillor Hayes?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. I think three or four questions. First question I had is on the financial side. I think you had referenced that the annual tax revenue to the town would be between 4.75 and 6.75 a year. But can you explain a little bit to me what the credit enhancement agreement is? Doesn't that suggest that in the early years, a lot of that tax revenue actually gets turned back to the developer? How does that, can you explain to us how that works and what the real net tax revenue might be in the first years of the project?
Yeah, I can't speak to the net flow of dollars, but I do understand that there's a, currently a credit enhancement agreement in place.
Yes, 8.5 million.
Yep. Originally, it was, I think, to expire in 2018 and maybe within the last couple of years was extended through until 2028 for the payout to the original participants. So that is, you know, something that the project is subject to on both sides, both the Cabela's side and our side. So that will impact, you know, the overall, I guess, net dollars initially running to the town. And that wasn't part of our, you know, sort of run-through and what the dollars look like. It's an existing agreement.
So the 4.75 to 6.75 is the gross tax revenue?
That's right.
Not the net that the town's going to actually receive?
That's right. It'll help the town pay off that credit enhancement obligation.
So what we will actually see as tax revenue will be significantly less than that?
Initially, yes.
Probably the first five years?
I don't recall what the term of the agreement.
Analysis we did would be about five years to turn that down to full payout. It's worth noting that the contract zone, as we introduced, the credit enhancement agreement applies to the same geography and land, both the shops and Square. Separate and apart from the town, there have been agreements, particularly through this change of ownership, in terms of how they share in the proceeds of that credit enhancement agreement. And Rich Cheney's in the audience, he probably can recite the top of the sentence. As I recall, the Gateway Square property that we're talking about tonight actually enjoys 15% of that, whereas 85% goes to the shops. So just to be clear, what goes toward their bottom line is just 15% of that. The vast majority goes to the original developer who made the investment.
Right. But my only point, when the town's not going to receive that tax revenue, is something we should, as we projected plans.
Yes.
8.75, right?
Yep. 8.25 annual cap and an overall cap of 8.25.
Second question I had, and this is really for staff. So we started off last week hearing about in the pipeline, there's 855 sort of in the pipeline multifamily unit permits that are needed. What we're committing to tonight, as we've heard, is 288 for this project. How do we, how do we account for and what is the council going to have to approve to honor the 850 sort of permits that are in the pipeline? How do we do that? We're going to have to replenish the pool, right? We don't have to. So do we have an accounting for how that plays out in the next five years of how many exceptions we're going to have to make or how much we're going to have to replenish that pool? And isn't that a key decision about what we want to do before we commit to any projects to understand how many we are going to commit to?
Well, I think what's being asked of you tonight is an initial commitment. And frankly, just in the last couple of weeks, we start to get a clearer vision of what sort of impact on the ordinance there actually exists. A number of those in that pipeline will actually secure their permits this year. So those won't be, they won't be needed going forward, it will. And then as we heard tonight, we had a better sense of what they're phasing. That matters. And the other projects, the other large project, we're not aware of their exact schedule. So all of those, there's a number of variables that affect the answer that we're looking for. Dan Bacon is here and he, I'm sure, can speak more eloquently to that. But I believe you're right. I think the council will have to consider opening the growth management ordinance and replenish is the word or ups, rightsizing that reserve pool to meet the expected demand.
Pretty significantly though, right? Because we're talking about...
Perhaps not. I mean, many of these units, the one-bedrooms are counted as half. So as was mentioned, they're looking for 80 growth permits because of the housing type that they're proposing.
80 this year.
Excuse me, 90.
90 this year in the balance.
Right. So there's just a number of variables. Your point's well taken and I think you are correct that the council, should you wish to go forward, will be looking at the growth management ordinance and will have to do a better job of advising you as to what the need will be. If you'll permit Dan, perhaps he can add some extra.
I think I was just going to follow up that, actually, since the workshop that we conducted a week ago. The Griffin Road project has got financing, so they're likely to begin in February. So they, just to the end of last week, pulled their growth permits under the current allocation. So the current year is 135. So that isn't something that needs to be accounted for next year. That project is entirely elderly, you know, so in terms of impacts and the project style, that's different from really the thrust around the that's different from, really, the thrust around the growth management ordinance in terms of pacing school population and that type of thing. The Avesta Housing Project, actually Friday, a project the council approved about a year ago for Contract Zone, got the second piece of funding that they need. They were on the list for the kind of 800 or so units. So they're looking now, because of that funding that they got, looking to probably pull their growth permits this year because they're going to get started next year. And I think within January, we're going to, we have this project that's under consideration, and the 79 Muzzy Road project, the Rusberry project, just started planning board review. So we'll have a better sense early in the new year, in January, as to what their phasing looks like, what their kind of unit count looks like in terms of one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. So I think, you know, that big 800 number all happening next year was, I'm sure, was intimidating, and it didn't necessarily, it maybe concentrated it next year more than it needed to. It was just our best guess based on information we had in the last few months. So things are coming clearer, becoming more in focus, and I think by mid-January, we'll have a better sense for it all, to bring to the council as to this is the amount, if you support various projects, this is the amount that you can increase the reserve pool, and you can have dialogue around that and see if that's of comfort to the council. So, things are kind of shaking out where it may not be as big a number as originally anticipated, as talked about a few weeks ago.
And I guess my, just my last question would be, so based on that, it feels like there's a lot of urgency that this needs to be decided tonight to move on. What sort of seeding that urgency, we heard a little bit about it, but if we were to wait to get some of these numbers finalized about where we are, what's the impact to your?
Who's that question to?
Any?
Okay.
Well, I think any developer will say that time is the most expensive. We've had this land under agreement since the summer. We've spent tens and, tens of thousands of dollars to get to this point. We're getting to the point where we're looking at the overall market. We see the need, we see the need now. We will have to start talking to lenders. No one's really going to take this project seriously if my response to them is, you know, it's unclear whether we will have the requisite permits. I think folks need to understand the process, and I'm not criticizing you doing exactly what a town council should do. From a developer, we need, we need to hit certain benchmarks. Every month, certain dollars go out. We can only, you know, we're a company that does different projects, and we have to kind of back the projects that are most likely to happen in the next 24 months. So, you know, we'd like to know one way or the other. I certainly understand this project. We've, you know, we spent many, many years developing in Scarborough, and it's a terrific environment. And we just need to know what the ground rules are and respond accordingly.
Thank you. Councilor Foley?
Will had to stand up first.
Oh, I was ready to move beyond questions, but if we're still doing questions.
Okay. So, two, and I'm not entirely certain where to direct them to. One would be, do we have an anticipated timeline between, so if we approve tonight, when do we think we would see this again at second reading? Is that two meetings from now, three meetings from now? Because for me, that could influence my decision.
I think the answer can probably just speculate when this will be back.
Procedurally, in terms of process, Bill laid out the steps. I guess the details of the steps would be, the next review is by the planning board. The planning board conducts a public hearing to get input like you received this evening. And then, as importantly, they begin their review of the project. And if this was a undeveloped site with, you know, not a lot of work, not a lot of work done in terms of engineering or infrastructure, it probably would be, you know, three meetings with the planning board to kind of work through what's the layout, where's everything going, what are the traffic implications, all those things. Because this site is pre-permitted, and because it's, infrastructure is largely in, a lot of their typical work is complete. So in that way, the planning board review, I suspect, is going to be shorter. You know, whether it's one meeting or two meetings, it's really up to the board and the applicant and how far they get through that conversation. But it wouldn't be as much as if, you know, this was Greenfield, if you will. So, I suspect that, you know, things get approved this evening in the first reading fashion. This will go to the planning board, I'm assuming, in probably late January. Will and his team have a better sense for where they are in terms of readiness to be at the planning board, but likely would go to the planning board maybe late January, early February, and have one or two discussions with them. And then it would come back to the council. So maybe that's, maybe that's late February, maybe that's early March. You know, it's really driven by their schedule and meeting schedules and their success with the planning board. So, I think that's.
It's fair to say, late January at the earliest.
I don't think they'd be back to you until February or early March. But Will's got, he's the one that's running the engineers, so.
At the earliest.
Yeah, February, March.
In terms of the growth management discussion, which is a parallel thing, that's something staff is prepared to come back to the council with more information, better numbers, a better sense, whenever you want to have that discussion. So that's really more up to the council.
And just for clarification, so the town council, when we receive it back, is actually a two-step process generally? It's a public hearing generally by itself. I have seen in the past where they've tried to combine that. We will want to discuss if that's applicable here, or whether it should be separated.
Sure.
And then have a second reading after that public hearing. So there is a two-step process at the end when we receive it back.
Correct. Yep, thank you.
And then my second question, which was spoken to in part, maybe, about the Avesta project, but I'm not a developer, no idea how your financing works, but is it, is it always typical that you have to go, when you go to your lenders, because one of the pieces of urgency that I'm sensing is around the financing and needing to go to your lenders and say, hey, we've got all of this approved. Is there ever a process by which you say, we've got 90 approved for 2017, we fully anticipate that the next 160 or whatever more will be approved in 2018? And do you get your financing incrementally as well? Is that ever a possibility?
It's a very good question, and I wrestle with that one. So, this is really kind of nuts and bolts. We have 280 units. We're basically losing money until we can build probably beyond 200. So, we need a critical mass to get started, which is probably 90 growth permits. If there is a certain expense of scale, so once you mobilize, you want to, you know, build as many structures as you can. And also, at the same time, you're leasing toward the market. So, you have, say, 24 units in a building, two to three buildings under construction, you're constantly leasing. And so, it also mitigates some of the concerns that Ben had asked about, are you building toward the market? Well, if we get into this and we build, say we build 180 units and they're not leasing, you know, we're not going to build spec buildings. That's one thing this company is, my company's never done, is spec. We will build to the market, we do our studies, we're not going to make mistakes. But to get back to your question, yeah, there is a critical mass of which we need to jump-start the project. And then we'll know where we're successful when we pull those second 90 permits.
I did just want to get one point of clarification. I heard a couple of different numbers for the number of growth permits. What I heard when you were doing the presentation was that this would take 180 growth permits, given the mix of housing. Is that correct? We're looking at 180 of the permits needed?
That's what I understood.
Proximal. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Donovan?
Mr. Devine, we, you know, we talked about timing's everything in your business, and we understand that you need to build as quickly as possible, take advantage of the marketplace. But you're also a victim of timing. Here we have 853 units proposed. That's an extraordinary number for our community to come online in 2017, 2018. I accept the municipal, the argument that municipal services would not be materially impacted from a cost point of view for a luxury apartment complex, because of the circumstances that you noted. We are all very concerned, and I know others at the town council table share my concern about the risk of impact on the school system. And the three-bedroom units that are proposed are really the critical element there. Are you, without asking you to sign on the dotted line, amenable to considering eliminating the three-bedroom units in a negotiation? As we all know, a Contract Zone Amendment is a negotiated arrangement.
Yeah, I would, going to hand it over to Brad, because he really is the marketing guru here. We really want to respond to the market. And we come forward, we don't have the answers to your growth management issues. I would feel the same way. 800 units is, seems like a lot. I do have a lot of confidence in town staff. I think they'll understand these projects, and I'm confident that if we were to pull 180 permits over the next 24 to 36 months, it will work well with the town. I'm confident that staff will be able to structure something that works for the town. So we'll, we want to be part of that process, but I'm confident that we're going to move ahead, knowing that it will work out.
Any other questions?
Yeah, as to the three bedrooms, what we've found actually is that we have a number of corporate rentals, and there's such a large magnitude of people who work from home now, that one of those bedrooms is an office. So we found that the majority of the children that we have on-site are not in three-bedroom units. It's fairly equally split of the 13 school-aged children are in the three-bedrooms and the two-bedrooms. So it's typically someone that has a little bit higher income that's looking for a home office, or they have a fairly regular visitor. You know, either a partner that comes, or a family member that comes and visits them. So that's.
And I guess my question was, how integral to the success of the balance sheet, of the spreadsheet, are the 39 three-bedrooms if those were 39 additional two-bedrooms?
Some of it has to do with the layout of the building, because these are, I don't want to call pre-canned buildings, but we have built this exact building. So to start changing the configuration, we're going to go back and now do an entire redesign of that building, which adds additional cost. Because there's just portions of each building that lays itself out to have a three-bedroom unit. So that's really what it comes down to. It's, you could, and you really can't make it a two-bedroom, you'd make it maybe a three and a one, or a two and a one, which then you start messing with the demographic profile of having too many one-bedrooms. So there's a very tight balance of the unit mix that you need to achieve.
I know you mentioned that you haven't done affordable housing, and I'm not talking about Section 8 housing, I'm talking about workforce housing. You know, people who are making 50, 60, 70,000 in a household income level. Are you amenable to negotiating an arrangement with the town for this Eighth Amendment related to affordable housing?
We know that the affordable housing is an issue. But, and we are looking forward to working with the town through that. I don't believe that this project is designed for that. That's not to say that as we get into it, we don't, I don't know how it works. I mean, I've had some discussions about percentage units and, you know, whether we could make a fee in lieu of affordable housing. I think that's, we're well aware of that is. But I don't, you know, I don't want to turn this project into a camel and then have it not work for anybody. So, we understand that that is of concern, and as part of the planning board, and that it will be part of this discussion.
You'd be open to considering fee-in lieu arrangements to discuss those?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions before comments? Councilmember comments? Councilor Kiazmer?
So, a couple of things. I try and break this down into its least common denominator for me. So I see the pros as, I'll do the cons first, being the ever pessimist. I know everybody's shocked. So the cons, expensive rents. This is a pretty high-end project. But again, it's commercial. So if their markets, if their rents aren't in line, they'll have to adjust one way or another if they want to fill vacancies. It's kind of their business model. I don't necessarily think that will negatively impact us, at least upfront. It may impact us long-term on the tax revenue generated by the property, but if there's a need for it, there's a need for it. I don't really think that, while I'm cognizant of the need for workforce and low-income housing, I don't think every project can accommodate everything all the time. I think we've got to be aware of the fact that there are potentially higher-end rentals out there, and there are people who are willing to pay that. And if they are, the market will support it, so be it. That's their business model. The growth permits, I don't necessarily see that as a negative thing. You know, we're kind of within our bailiwick at this point. We've got 137 per year. We've got our reserve. We're not going to exceed the reserve with this. That, to me, is a discussion for another time. If it's first come, first served, they're in line. If they're going to phase it out over a couple of years, that certainly helps. I think it's important to remember that we're not doing 800 in one shot. We're going to reset the clock next year, and then we can decide whether we're going to replenish the reserve and to what extent, and how we want to do it through that process. The pros, I see this as kind of the biggest thing. It's, let's not forget, this is a development in Haga. We've been talking about this for 20 years. Okay? You know, how many projects have gone by the wayside because of an indecision or market factors that haven't kind of played in? They're shovel-ready. This is not all of Haga's Parkway. It certainly could be a catalyst, I think, for more investment, more potential. This is one of our key goals. It's been one of our goals, certainly from a financial perspective. The development of Haga's has kind of been a, an anchor or an albatross around our neck as a town for a while. I think this is an opportunity, I think we should take advantage of it. And then, the last thing is the impact on town services. I really don't see, the growth's going to come to the town, one way or another. I certainly see a project like this as being less impactful than a 200-unit single-family home development, or 150-unit single-family development. So, I certainly can support the Contract Zone Amendment. I think the planning board will do its job. I think they'll negotiate whatever the requirements are, and they'll work in the best interest of the town, but I don't see any reason not to move it forward.
Thank you. Other council comments? Council St. Clair?
I don't, I don't see, I don't see any issues with this. I think this is a project that would do really well in Scarborough. I think there's a need for it. You know, it's been frustrating, I've been on the council now for a long time. And it was frustrating to watch, by the wayside, as Scarborough Downs crumbled in front of us. And to feel helpless, to be able to do nothing about it. That was a large property, that was a lot of plans that people wanted to do, and it was met with so much criticism and so much backlash that people ran away from it. And I, I think there is a time for, and it's our responsibility to the citizens of Scarborough to nitpick at certain things and to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. But I also think there's a time where we put our, we have to put some of our faith and our trust in our planning department, and that they're bringing forward stuff to us that is going to be beneficial and is going to bring in revenue to this town. And, you know, one thing I constantly hear from people in this town is, they want to keep their services the same, and they want great schools, and they want their trash picked up on time, and they want snow removal. Well, all of those things happen from revenue, and from the money that we get from businesses and from housing in this town. We can't provide those services if we don't allow this town to grow more. And yes, we are becoming, I know, it's getting annoying that I keep saying this, we are becoming a small city. We are growing, and we do have to control some of that. And that is our job. But I don't see that this project is going to be harmful at all to this town. I think it's going to be extremely beneficial. I think, yes, it's frustrating that we would potentially have to wait five years for revenue from it. I hate that part of it. But I think on the flip side of that, once we get past those five years, that's a lot of money. of money. That's gonna go into the budget that we desperately need. And we lost out on the revenue that we could have gotten from the Scarborough Downs project, and I hope and pray that we're still gonna see something come out of that. I hope we're gonna get something, someone's gonna come in and develop that area. That is, you know, and I'm grateful that this is over by Haga's Parkway. This is something we've been talking about for years and years, and we haven't had anybody really take a good bite out of that area. And to see if this slips away, it's gonna be extremely frustrating. So I, I'm gonna support this, and do everything I can to see it move forward.
Other comments? Council Rowan?
So there are a number of things that I really like about this project. I'm tired of the empty lot that sits there. I live very close to it, and sometimes jog through the empty lot. And I enjoy the wildlife that I see, but you know, it's, I think it's time to develop that thing. I like this project. I think that there's, there's a real need for diversity in the housing stock in Scarborough. And I think that this project really provides that. We don't, we don't have a lot of the, the high-end, multifamily rental in Scarborough. When you drive down 95 on your way south, you see quite a bit of it. I think that, you know, HUD just had its, its analysis for 2015 through 2018, and was talking about the need for more rental units in the, in the greater Portland area. I think I heard a comment from Mr. Howard earlier about the statewide median income. And I'm not sure that's really applicable to this project, because the Portland median income is considerably higher. And we also have a very low unemployment rate, and we have essentially a, getting to the point of labor shortage. The, the area median income around Portland is much higher than statewide. The, we did bring up affordable housing. We also have a need in town for diversity, socioeconomic diversity. And I think when, when we talk about density bonuses in other zones, and I'm not sure about the Haga's zone, but this is a, this is a contract zone, so we don't have to do anything necessarily. But we do offer density bonuses in exchange for a percentage of, you know, affordable units being built. There is an opportunity for an in-lie payment to get, to get out of it. But I think a community like this would be well-served with some diversity inside of that community. That would be up to, you know, the developer and the managing partner to decide if they'd like to do an in-lie payment, or actually build and, and serve the house. I mean, from my perspective, this, you know, the skillset of, of this collective is building housing, and, and so therefore, we would have an opportunity to actually have some houses built with, that could be rented to income-qualified families. And when we talk about affordable housing in Scarborough, it's really important to note that, that we're not serving the Section 8 population. We don't have a housing authority like Westbrook, and South Portland, and Portland. We, but what we provide in our guidelines, and how we've defined affordable housing, is 80% of area median income. And so for a family of four, that's $60-plus thousand a year. So the, the rents that those households would be able to afford would be in the, you know, the affordable definition is 30% of income, including utilities. So the rents that could be, that could be paid by an income-qualified individual with a $60,000 income is 1,500 bucks a month. So it's not that these, these units would be given away for free. You would just be providing some diversity, socioeconomic diversity inside your community. So I, I think as part of the contract zone amendment that we're putting forth, this is first reading. I don't think it would be inappropriate to amend this further, to include a, an affordable housing component in exchange for the density, and the fact that we're going from a requirement for 60% commercial down to zero. I'm very cognizant of the fact that we don't want this project to become economically unviable because of the demands that we're putting on it. But I do think that some percentage would be appropriate inside the zone. I guess I'd like to hear other feedback from other councilors before I offer that amendment.
Yeah, I guess, I'm in a slightly different place, and I don't think I'll be voting to support this tonight. It has nothing to do with the project. It really has much more to do with sort of our process, and how we got to where we are. My concern is, as councilmembers, we all took, our goals were no surprises, and to have complete transparency with our constituents. And, you know, as you've heard tonight, a lot of us were surprised, as councilors, last week about the pipeline. I'm pretty sure most of our constituents out there in the audience have no idea about what we're talking about. Two, I'm a little concerned that we're doing this just before Christmas. I mean, if anybody's households, like my household, we have a bunch of people inbound tonight, we've got shopping to do. I still have, luckily, there's still shopping days, because I've done none, so. But people are just really distracted. So to me, it's more of the process. We've heard a lot about the business case of why this makes sense for the town. What I reflect back on the workshop we did have, it really struck me, Suzanne Foley-Ferguson talked about, the last time they did a comprehensive plan process, they actually went out and polled the residents of Scarborough, what did they want their community to look like. They did raise a concern about, their preference was for single-family housing over this type of housing. We haven't updated that, we haven't done that, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. Rocky Rusper also talked about saying, the last time we did the comprehensive plan, we did a really good job of getting the zoning right, getting the provisions right. He really cautioned us against making major changes. We're talking about making some changes. So I would, and then, just as we got, we asked a lot of questions from the workshop, we got answers yesterday, we're finding out new information. If this isn't gonna go to the planning board until late January, I would love to take a little bit more time to kind of get some additional questions answered, and so we can get a little bit more comfortable. My big question is, how do we account for the permits? So I'm uncomfortable, I love the project, I think it has merit. I'm just concerned about where we are, and the fact that I bet 90% of our constituents out there in the audience have not seen any of these materials, and they probably are not really up to speed. I'd like to be able to take the time to get some input. I put something on my Facebook page today, got a couple responses back. This is really off the screen of most people, they're really confused about what we're talking about. I think we owe it to our constituents to at least inform them, engage them, and let them have, have their say. So that's, that's my position.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who first.
I think Will was first.
So I forgot a couple things. So. But I'd also like to respond to Council Hayes's comment. I think that in terms of engaging our constituents, this is the first reading. There'll be opportunity for further discussion as, as we move along, and there's another, there are more opportunities for public input, and public hearings through the planning board, and then again, for us, before second reading. But I think, a couple of the things that I like about the project. We've suffered a little bit from a chicken-and-egg problem on Haga's Parkway, and I think that, that this kind of resolves some of that issue, in terms of where that development might go. I like the fact that there's still a spot there for some commercial development that could be put in, for maybe some restaurants, and at least on the drawings, the initial drawings. And then lastly, I wanted to just highlight the, the positive ROI that was brought up at the, at the workshop, meaning that, that the, because of the low, the belief that, that there will be a lower impact for community services, or need for community services, that the actual tax revenue will exceed that. We don't see that in single-family housing. We don't necessarily see that in a lot of commercial properties. But, but I wanted to highlight again that as a positive.
Council Foley?
So, I kind of think of this as a holiday cookie. Like, who doesn't want a really good holiday cookie, right? It looks great. In and of itself, this project is fantastic. The area is clearly in need, and as everyone has said, I think we'd all be in agreement, that Haga's Parkway, we need some things to start happening there to attract more things. You know, it's like throwing that first pot of honey out, and then the rest of the bees will start to swarm, we hope. I, my biggest concern is similar to Council Hayes, in that I had four and a half days to view the, the full scope of the project. I was unable to attend the workshop last week, I was able to view it over the weekend. The audio isn't the greatest, but one of the things that struck me in the workshop was a comment, actually by Council, a former Councilor Judy Roy, who stated that historically in town, this type of project had not been very widely supported. And so, I too feel like I just want to make sure that constituents have all the information that they need. So on top of the only four and a half days for me to kind of catch up, and I realize I'm the newcomer to the council table here, and that's part of why I'm maybe feeling more behind, but also, less than 24 hours since we got our answers back. So it seems to me that this has been a, obviously, an ongoing project for a long time, you have tons of work. So had we had a greater opportunity with a longer time period, even two weeks between meetings, to kind of view, and I haven't even had the opportunity to have a good lengthy discussion with any individual counselor on this. I talked with Chairman Bevin very shortly today. But, so, so time and pace is my concern, that's why I asked the question about financing. It's not that I don't support the project, but like a holiday cookie, one holiday cookie can be really good for you. 10 holiday cookies, maybe not so much. And when we look at the pipeline of projects that we have coming down the road, it's that layering effect that I worry about. That said, I do understand that, you know, there will be a lot more that would come out of the planning process, and it going, and if I had my druthers, we'd wait till the next comp plant was done, because that's happening this year. I realize that's probably not realistic for you folks at all. So I am willing to support this tonight with strong trepidation, and a desire to learn a heck of a lot more as it goes through the process, if that makes sense.
Council Donovan?
Just touch on some of the things that I think are, are important. I think it's important that this is the first reading. I think it's important for the people who are proposing this to understand that, I think several of us, maybe all of us, would like to see elements of the contract zone, Eighth Amendment negotiated further. That's important to me. As far as timing, I think we have probably two to three months where this is gonna be in front of us. The planning board process, I think, is critical. I'm glad I wasn't, but I am now glad that I'm liaison to the planning board, because I'm gonna go to each of those hearings, and immerse myself so that I can at least provide a flow of information back to the other six of you. I fully accept that Haga's Parkway needs a boost, and we should not miss the opportunity because we have to work harder and faster than we might like. I much prefer the deliberative process, but that may not be quite as possible. But we'll never make a decision that we think is not in the best interest of the community. I know that we're all together on that. I accept that the revenue from property taxes will eventually be a very valuable element to the community, because I think the case can be made that this will be a net positive, a considerable net positive. I worry about the schools, because while other situations may indicate that it's not a high school impact, Scarborough has a very good school system. And so, and this is a wonderful location, so I think people will be drawn to the project. I think it's going to be successful. But I want it to be both successful for the people who are developing it, and for our community. And if we burden our school system, that will be a, a real negative on this. So that's why I was interested in the three-bedroom issue. For me, I need to see how this thing plays out. I'm prepared to support it for first reading, but I want to see where things go. And we'll be making our decision, I think the seven of us, based on what's best for Scarborough.
Council Chair?
Yeah, so I just wanted to address the issue of timing. You know, I think we're, we're, I want to, I guess, I think it's important to point out, we're not being asked to fast-track anything. We're not being asked to expedite anything. We're following normal due process. As investors and as business people, they have a right to ask for timely decisions that are in line with the normal way that we do things. You know, if we slowed every process down and we delayed everything, I think we'd find it very difficult to do business in town. So I want to make sure that we understand, or the public understands, we're not expediting anything. This is the normal process, there's a normal timeline, there's due process in there, there's numbers of checks and balances in there, and opportunities for the community to weigh in on multiple levels. Being first reading starts the process, gives them a little bit of understanding of where they're going, gives us a commitment to move forward, and begins that process moving forward. So I think it's important to point that out, that this isn't, we're not being asked to do anything extraordinary in this process.
Council St. Clair?
Two, two things I wanted to mention. One, keep in mind that when we approved Muzzy Road a couple weeks ago, they were talking about $1,800 rents. So this isn't, this, what they're asking from us is not outside of the norm. I think we need to keep that in mind. I understand the need for, I've always been a proponent of asking every single unit that goes in if we can get affordable housing. But I think that, and I think Will, you probably understand this best, there's a big difference between affordable housing and lower-income rent. And what contractors have to do to qualify those apartments, or those condos, or those duplexes for low-income housing. That's something that I don't think is always explained really well, and needs to be explained to this council, because it is a new council. Does that make sense? And I think that we would benefit from maybe a review of the differences in those things. And then the second thing I wanted to say really quickly was, I'm happy to hear that Council Donovan is going to, is on the planning board as a liaison, and is going to be paying attention to all of these. I think there was a breakdown in communication, and that's why a lot of us were so surprised. I, myself, when I got that list, and I said this at the, at the meeting, was frustrated by the fact that we seemed so surprised by what was in the pipeline. And that, to me, is a, there's a breakdown in communication somewhere. We should have been apprised of all of those situations. But that, those, those things that had been approved should not have been surprises to us. And so I think that either our liaisons have to start doing a more thorough, better job on some of these bigger committees, or we've got to figure out a better way for us to be kept in the loop of this stuff. Because there should never be a surprise of over 800 units that are coming to Scarborough, ever. That's an embarrassment as a counselor. In my, on my part, I was embarrassed that I didn't know that. And I'm the one that has to answer to the constituents when I say, "Oh yeah, did you know that this was happening?" And they're like, "No, did you?" And I'm like, "Oh, no." That's, that's my, that's my failure. And I'm the person that has to take responsibility for that. But let's figure out how we make sure that this council is kept aware of all of those projects that are going on. Whether they're gonna happen or not, we still need to know if they're being discussed.
Council Rowan?
So, two, two things. First, when, when we were discussing Muzzy Road, my understanding was that Mr. Rusper was talking about rents for the one-bedroom of 1,150 to 1,200, and then the, in the $1,400 range for the two-bedroom.
I don't know. I'll reach, I'll reach.
And then, secondly, so the Scarborough Housing Alliance has a set of guidelines that we put together to provide to Eastern Village, which is the first time that we've dealt with rental, income-qualified individuals, or rental units. And essentially, the, the process is that it's up to the manager, to the manager of the property, is responsible for every year, in making sure that the individuals that are renting the units that are, that are meeting the affordable requirement, is doing an income qualification by looking at their, their 1040, and looking at their income. So that's how, how they're validating income. And then they're certifying to the town that, that that's the case. The guidelines are saying that, you know, they're not designated special units for affordable, but they are, again, they're just members of the community, they're first-class citizens of the, of the development. So, we don't have a lot of experience, because that's our, that's our first pass-through, and Mr. Hall might have more information on that. No?
Well, sorry.
Not on that matter.
Let me just ask him a rebuttal question. My concern is that when properties are being built in these subdivisions, or we had an incident down the street where we were promised some low-income housing... incident down the street where we were promised some low-income housing, and I believe my concern is when it's under construction. There are certain things that you have to do when it's under construction, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to qualify or to make those units low-income or affordable with the state. Is that correct?
Oh.
There are certain qualifications that you have to meet as a contractor, and that's where it gets tricky.
I think you're referring to the Section 8 housing. And for that, I believe that that is the case. And we're not talking about Section 8 here. Our Scarborough requirement is a local ordinance that we've attached.
No, 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 I'm not, I know about the ordinance. I'm talking about not Section 8 housing. I'm talking about low-income housing.
So there's no-
When it's under construction, I thought that there was a piece that the contractor had to meet certain requirements with the state for it to be deemed low-income housing.
So if I can, if I can just interject, so to you folks, I'm actually a banker, and I've dealt with these projects. So to the council's point, it depends on the financing structure in which they've received from the bank, and if that is actually backed by the state.
Okay.
Or by another agency that supports low-income housing.
Okay.
In which then, because of those lower rates that they're getting, the interest rates that they have to pay, then they do have to meet certain qualifications, whether that starts with the construction or whether that starts solely with the types of units. I'm not 100% familiar on it, but that's really Section 8 housing. It is not because of the financing tool that's being used.
Okay.
My understanding is that this is not such a financing tool, so therefore, it's whatever we decide as part of our contract zone and our local ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add some clarity to the pipeline? And I apologize for the sticker shock, but keep in mind, 100 units of that 853 were approved 10 years ago.
Right.
They're just by coincidence now coming online. About 80 others were in front of you. New approvals of TIFs and contract zones about two years ago. Again, coincidentally, for all sorts of reasons, they each had their own struggles. You heard Avast is filing it funded tonight. It's just coincidentally coming online. So it does look like a big number, but, you know, many of these have been touched by this council and certainly been approved for some time. And then, of course, we have two big ones that really kind of tip the scale.
Counsel Kepa.
So if I can just clarify through the chair, there was a question about what Mr. Rizberra's comment was, or quote was for rents. One-bedroom, $1,250 with heat and utilities included. Two-bedroom, $1,400 with heat and utilities included. Excuse me, heat and hot water, not utilities. Heat and hot water included.
Thank you for the clarification. Counsel Foley.
I forgot a couple of things.
Absolutely.
I figured Will forgot, I could too. Number one, I was happy to hear that, I'd like Counsel Donovan's question around you being potentially amenable to considering the fee in lieu of potentially allocating affordable housing units as a possibility. So I'd love to hear more about that conversation as it goes back to the planning board. I agreed with Mo Erickson earlier, who said the community needs a pool. I hear they're going to have a pool there. I don't know. I'm a swimmer, so that would be a good thing. And what I also wanted to mention that I thought was interesting is I knocked on probably 800 to 1,000 doors during the campaign, and I was asked very few questions about anything pertaining to local issues. This particular project, interestingly enough, was on the radar of at least two constituents that I had no prior relationship to. So I put that out there just as a point of reference for the rest of the council, that it's interesting, those two constituents were not very supportive. They also didn't necessarily have perhaps all the information that they would need. So I think when you see a council perhaps being somewhat tentative in terms of how we move things forward, it's because we want it to be successful. And what we've learned about how to make things successful is to not have people feel surprised. Whether they should be surprised or not, that's a whole different thing because perception is their reality. So, thank you.
Other comments before I make a couple, if you don't mind? Yes, go ahead.
So I think I threatened to add an amendment. I think I made my point, and that there'll be time for staff to negotiate, and it goes through the planning board. So I think I'm comfortable without an amendment on first reading. But I would like to say that if we, that I'd really like it to be addressed, and if it comes to second reading, then maybe there, I'd have something more formal.
Not seeing any other questions or comments from the other councils, I'd like to add a couple of comments for myself, a couple personal, and then some observations. First is, I appreciate Counsel Rowan's acknowledgement of the amendment that he wished. I think that there is a very strong sense that we would like to have this as part of the conversation. I kind of understand and agree that this project might not be one that actually employs affordable housing under the definition within the project, but there might be an advantage for the town as a whole to take that into consideration for us to be able to grow as a community and can be part of that process going forward. I think it's, first, I really want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the workshop process that we had it a week ago. It was very quick, but we had a very good turnout, and it was very pleasing to receive the comments and the suggestions from everyone, as well as the input. We did have all of the town council there. We also had members of SEDCO present, as well as the planning board, long-range planning, and-
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. So it was a very well, a very good opportunity for us to kind of go through at least the beginning stage of getting information, and I appreciate that. You know, one of the speakers at that session was Dr. Gail, and I apologize if I pronounce this wrong, but Brazo, who was a member of the SEDCO board, who spoke very eloquently about why this project is needed in Scarborough, and that is because of the demand in the entire region and not just the composition of where we live today in Scarborough, or in its proximity to the main mall, which is what a lot of people kind of look at when they think about these projects and how close it is. It's about reacting to the economic climate that we're in and responding to the workforce environment that we have in New York County and on our borders, as well as in Portland. And we see the struggles that the city of Portland is having with its rental properties or its rental market, where their downtown is really not becoming a rental market anymore. It's becoming a condominium market. So this is a, to me, a very nice opportunity for us. I think the placement of the project is absolutely perfect in conjunction to both its acreage, the density bonus that's being asked for, given that proximity to where it is, to the highway, and to the other services and the composition. I personally do not have a problem with 39 three-bedroom units in this particular project, given its size. I was, at one time, one of those executives. I have a four-bedroom, a four-bedroom, single-family home here in Scarborough. I lived in a three-bedroom condo apartment in both Boston as well as Indianapolis, and it was for executive purposes and family purposes with having a home office. So I can see that being a big part of that. In fact, I would love to downsize out of my four-bedroom, single-family home into a three-bedroom apartment, especially on snow days when you have to shovel. I also wanted to suggest, so I started off with a timeline of amendments to several projects. It's really about the fact that over time, and we have been dealing with, I think this is the 20th anniversary in which we first started contract zones, 10 years since this particular, kind of, this area has been started to been talked about. And the fact is that every council has been willing to make amendments and adjustments to the contract zones in order to meet the demands or meet the requirements to be able to project out growth in this area and to focus on it. I think that this is just another iteration of that. I don't think that there is anything wrong with the process that's been undertaken. I have full faith in the staff that's come forward with its recommendation. That's what we pay them to do. So I don't have a problem with that. I have the full faith and confidence within the planning board that they will vet. If you think our questions are going to be tough, I know that their questions are going to be tough, especially when it comes to landscaping with one particular planning board that's been there for many years. So I know that it's going to be vetted properly, it's going to be done very thoroughly, and that we will have the right process in place so that we also vet that for our citizens and for them. You know, there was a comment made that the citizens really have no idea, and I always add the "R" into that, so I apologize, I'm trying to change it, they have no idea that we're undertaking this. I think that they elect us to make that decision for them when they aren't knowledgeable about this, and that we will do the due diligence and the homework. So I'm comfortable in making that decision tonight, and I am in support of that. I did want to mention, this is about, so I've been here, actually, although not the longest consecutive counselor, I am the longest-serving counselor, at least amongst these folks. I've actually been serving since 2000. And so I've been here when Hagis Parkway was first thought of, when it started to get developed, when we talked about underground utilities, when we talked about, I saw the debate that this community had when People's Heritage Bank, which was the original bank that talked about moving here. It was a very different situation because they were actually looking for a tax rebate rather than any issues about zoning that weren't favorable. It's now TD Bank and their facility out in Farnham is a very nice facility and is still there. You know, we've also talked about Fairchild coming. Who knows what's going to happen with them, so whether that was a good issue or not. The issue for me, and why I'm kind of reflecting on that, is that we've taken 20 years to think about what we can do, what we want to do, and we haven't been very successful. This is an opportunity I don't think that we should lose and take too many chances on. You know, as I said to my wife before, you know, burn me once, shame on me. I don't get burned twice, and I think that this is the time for us to take this risk. And while we can be cautious in the process, it does cause us to actually make a decision. And I think that we should be ready to do so with the full faith of our community behind us. So I am very much in support of this. And by the way, so the other piece on why I think it was brought up, I can't remember who talked about it, but there are two key factors that make us really, or force us to make this decision now, and that is the market. We're dealing with higher construction costs that are already starting. I'm already seeing higher interest rates within the market as a banker, particularly longer-term rates and notes. So this is an opportune time for us to kind of partner in making that right decision rather than us going kind of solo on it. So I am very comfortable in moving this forward and know that we'll give it's proper due diligence as it goes through. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Any other comments from council before, yes, Counsel Rowan?
I think it's pronounced Hagis.
Thank you. The HP Zone.
It's Swedish, okay.
Any other comments? Not seeing any, the will of the council, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. And that's a six to one vote. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you for coming in.
Moment to break down?
Yeah. If we could take a two-minute recess to let our guests break down and depart, that'd be great. Thank you. We'll be right back.[1329.61] Council meeting back to order, we just had a short adjournment to have our guests leave, and we can move on to our next order of business, which is order number 16-083. It's an act on the request from the deputy tax collector for a waiver, a foreclosure on the following properties: Ford David Drive, map T-003, lot 004; 29 Matthews Way, map T-003, lot 029; 13 Crystal Lane, map T-003, lot 013; 15 Crystal Lake, map T-003, lot 015; and 20 Garnet Drive, map T-003, lot 020, and to authorize the town manager to sign the necessary documentation. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Actually, excuse me, I apologize, I need to open for public comment first.
My bad.
Would anybody like to speak from the public on this matter? Not seeing anybody, a motion please.
Still moved.
In a second?
Second.
Council comments or questions?
Oh, awesome.
Yes, please.
I hate when, you know, I hate seeing this stuff. It always just like, you know, I understand it's a necessary part for what has happened and people need to, you know, do their part and pay their way, but I always hate seeing this stuff. I do, I do always know that the town does everything they can, you know, to try to help people get through these kinds of things, and I know this is always our last-ditch effort, so obviously I'll fully support it and have full confidence in the town manager to deal with it.
To see if we could, we continue to work with all these folks for which automatic foreclosure is pending, very soon now. In the, in the event that they're not able to meet their obligations and the lien doesn't mature, this at least gives us the security and, actually, the action you're considering is an act of compassion.
Right.
We're not foreclosing, and it's really not a position the town wants to be in.
Council Rowan?
When, so if we pass this tonight, I'm assuming that we, I mean, I'll probably support, I certainly will support this, but when, so it would no longer be an automatic process, it would now be you'd have to take affirmative action to do the foreclosure.
Right.
I understand.
To stop the foreclosure from happening.
So we're taking the action tonight to stop the foreclosure. If we still need to foreclose in the future, it would then be up to you to-
Absolutely, we continue to file new liens for unpaid taxes and the cycle begins again.
Any other questions? I have a question. Can you refresh my memory, before the lien is placed, isn't generally that's about 18 months after the actual tax payment is due?
Exactly.
So this is not taxes that are due for 2016, we're talking now about taxes that were due in 2000, and early 2014 maybe even, I'm sorry, late 14, early 15.
Yeah, tax lien takes 18 months to mature.
Okay.
So they're passed.
My bad.
I just wanted to make sure citizens knew that. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item is order number 16-084, Act on the Request to Authorize the Town Manager to Enter into a Service Agreement with the Town of Wells for Vehicle Maintenance and to Sign Any and All Documents. I'll turn that over to the town manager first.
I promise this is the last time I'll do it for you with this matter. This dates back to actually last budget cycle. Mike Shaw at Public Works identified a need for some additional vehicle techs, but not enough need to hire a full-time person. And at the same time, he was talking to his colleagues in other towns who were lamenting over the fact that they were paying high price for fairly poor service and might keep forward and were able to actually provide vehicle maintenance services now to the towns of Aldorship Beach and Hollis. And this is for a fairly specialized kind of the pumps, the specialty work, it's not for full vehicle maintenance, and that's why we're, we feel very confident we're capable of handling this additional workload. Just as a final reminder, we had always intended of bringing on Westbrook, but that did not materialize. So the combination of this and Hollis kind of balances that out. So we're very pleased and everyone we're working with seems very happy with the arrangements.
Council Kiazou?
Question for the manager, could, any chances that Westbrook may come back to the board or to the table at all, or is it, was it a pretty definitive no and we're moving on?
It was a definitive no, we waited six months frankly, and I think the manager there understands that we needed to make some different decisions, and I don't expect they'll come back, nor could we accommodate them frankly.
Did they give, sorry, if I could just quick follow-up, did they give an explanation why, just-
Politically.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, was that political?
Political.
Okay.
I think one or more elected officials had family members on Public Works staff, you can just imagine.
Oh, politics is local. Councilor Hayes, I believe you won.
Yeah, just a quick question, and I think this is direct at the town manager, I think last time they confirmed it too, but this is a net revenue position for us, right?
Yes, we're actually-
More than cover our-
More than cover, it's about a 25% margin for us. And at the same time, it still is a very, very good deal for the other parties. Thank you.
Council Sinclair?
I just have to say anything, you know, I have so much faith in Mike Shaw and his team, and I mean, here they continue to blow everything out of the water with what they do, so, I mean, he's, he knows what he's doing, he runs a tight ship, and if this is something that he's proposing and all for, I have every confidence in the world that this is exactly what we should be doing, so.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? I have a question. At what point do we determine a saturation point in our ability to service other contracts outside of our own municipality?
This is, in my experience, professional experience, this is the first time we've actually hired staff and sought this business. Typically, there's a synergy or some sort of relationship that happens organically or by crisis sometimes. This one was a little different, that we saw an opportunity and to Mike Shaw's credit, he really made it happen. Under that model, there's really no saturation if we want to get into this business. I think we need to be mindful, and I am, that we have a core business to support, which is to maintain excellent services for our citizens first and foremost. So I guess that's the thing I'd be concerned about, is if we get to the point where we're not doing that anymore and worried more about providing performance under a contract to someone else. And I'm comfortable that we're not anywhere near that at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, all in favor? That is unanimous.
I have a motion.
You didn't have a motion?
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm on the next one, sorry.
Shoot, it's okay.
My apologies.
Okay, keep me straight. Next item is, let's see, order number, order number 16-085, Act to Accept Donations to the Town of Scarborough Received in 2016 for the Eastern Trail Closed the Gap Campaign and to Ratify the Memorandum of Understanding Dated August 31, 2016 Between the Town of Scarborough, the Eastern Trail Alliance, and the Eastern Trail Management District. With that, I would open up the floor for any public comment. Not seeing any motion from the floor.
Still moved.
Second.
Town manager comments?
I've got a prompt that's going to help me. By way of background, and this council is, I think, acutely aware, because this council provided actually $216,000 of funding toward this project. There's a larger gap, and we've been diligently fundraising in the community. Councilor Hayes has been a very frequent member, and we're pleased to see Councilor Foley attend the last meeting. And the arrangements that we've worked out, there's really a great group of talented folks and committed to this cause. We've worked an arrangement out whereby the Eastern Trail Alliance has been receiving the majority of these donations and have in turn turned them over to us for safekeeping, if you will. And what's important about that is that should we be successful and ultimately let a contract, it will be the town that actually lets the contract. So I would always like to have money in-house and in control before we agree and sign any dotted line. To date, we've done quite well. There was great press today, just as an aside, what's been received as of, you know, what's been received so far is about $106,000 in donation, and there's $100,000 up in here.
Awesome.
It is between all sorts of smaller donations and a big matching grant of $50,000 from the Eastern Trail Alliance. So we're well on our way, just today, Town and Country Federal Credit Union was announced that they have $100,000 donation levels, which is terrific.
Amazing.
And so we're starting to build some steam and momentum. Forgive me for going into that background, but what this is about is just legitimizing, if you will, the memorandum of understanding we have with the Eastern Trail Alliance, and technically the council will need to approve all donations. I'm not going to necessarily bother you every meeting, I'll probably do it monthly or as needed in batches. So you'll, you'll see these coming as, as our success grows.
Excellent.
Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, a little bit of background too, this actually kind of, you know, what was the birth of this or sort of the origin of this, is we actually had some contributors that really felt more comfortable that rather than having the Eastern Alliance actually have the money, that it actually ended up being here in the Town Coppers. They just felt more comfortable that that really guaranteed the monies were going to go for their purpose. So some of this was really to help kind of ease the contributors', you know, peace of mind about what we were doing and stuff, so a couple of us asked us to do it, so.
The other side of that, the other side of that, individuals and corporations often aren't comfortable giving money to government, frankly, so it really works out well in that regard. Eastern Trail Alliance, their name says it all, and I think that it really is a good relationship we've sorted through.
Council Donovan?
Was there a deadline by which the monies had to be raised, or we ran the risk of losing state funding?
Well, there was a deadline from DOT, who is the chief funder for the end of this calendar year. We've had meetings most recently, and that is not a hard deadline, but we don't really want to publicize that, we want to keep the pressure on and really build on this momentum. But we do have the full support of DOT, which is key in this.
Huge.
How far do we have to go?
I don't know exactly, I think we're still in the $400,000 range, so there's still a lot of work to do.
Yeah. Council Sinclair on that, Kiazou?
Is the Eastern Trail Alliance, are they a registered nonprofit, are they a nonprofit?
Believe they are, yeah.
So when people make a donation to them, then they can, there's nonprofit, they're nonprofit status, so that, with corporations, I'm sure that helps.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm looking here at the memorandum of understanding, they are.
A registered 501(c).
Yes.
Okay, great.
Council Kiazou?
It struck me that we also authorized a sum of money that was going to expire in a certain period through finance, I think we set some money aside. Do we need to revisit that anytime soon, or?
The budget authority doesn't lapse.
Okay.
It would, it's a capital item, so we would never borrow until we need it.
Right.
But the authority doesn't lapse. So no, no further action required.
Other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is order number 16-086, Act on the Council Chair Appointments for Council Standing Committees and Council Liaisons. In the form of a motion, I'll read those, and then if you would allow me, then I can make a comment under Councilor Comments or Councilor Questions and Comments. In the form of a motion, I would recommend that we move approval of the following appointments for the 2016, 2017 council year. For standing committees, Appointments Committee, Councilor Kiazou as chair, Councilor Hayes and Councilor Donovan. Finance Committee, Councilor Hayes as chair, Councilor Kiazou and Councilor Baybine, and Councilor Rowan as an alternate. Ordinance Committee, Councilors Donovan as chair, Councilor Sinclair, Rowan as members, and Councilor Foley as an alternate. Communications Committee, Councilor Sinclair as chair, Councilor Foley and Councilor Hayes. Rules and Policy Committee, Councilor Foley, Councilor Foley as chair, Councilor Sinclair and Councilor Donovan. Fair Hearing Committee, Councilor Rowan as chair, Councilor Donovan and Councilor Kiazou. Council Liaison Appointments as follows. ADA Advisory, Councilor Foley. Coastal Harbor, Councilor Hayes. Conservation Commission, Councilor Foley. Community Chamber of Commerce, Councilor Sinclair. Eastern Trail Alliance, Councilor Foley. EcoMaine Board of Directors, Councilor Donovan with a term to expire in 2017. Energy Committee, Councilor Donovan. Firing Range, Councilor Sinclair. GP COG, which stands for Greater Portland Council of Governments General Assembly, Councilor Kiazou, Manager Tom Hall, Assistant Manager Crockett. Health Safety and Security, Councilor Sinclair. Historical Preservation, Councilor Rowan. Housing Alliance, Councilor Rowan. Libraryary Trustees, Councilor Baybine. Long Range Planning, Councilor Kiazou, Councilor Rowan as an alternate. Metro Coalition, Councilor Donovan. Organics Committee, Councilor Donovan. PAX Policy Committee, Councilor Kiazou. The Pest Management Committee, Councilor Donovan. The Planning Board Liaison, Councilor Donovan. SEDCO, which is Scarborough's Economic Development Corporation, Councilor Rowan. The Senior Advisory Committee, Councilor Rowan. Shelfish Conservation, Councilor Hayes. And the Transportation Committee, Councilor Kiazou. And that was in the form of a motion, if I could have a second?
Still moved.
Just a couple of comments, first is to undertake that task, I thought it was going to be not quite as complex, but trying to match everything was a little bit of a task, and I hope I was successful, because I did want to take into four considerations in those appointments first, was I did have a chance to speak with each of the counselors and try to meet their requests and their needs as well as their priorities. I also wanted to make sure that each counselor was chair of at least one standing committee. I wanted to match the council's experience with each appointment, especially as it relates with seating a chair on those committees, and then to find synergies in the work that we have on those standing committees, also with the liaison positions. The best example of that is, I would suggest, is Councilor Donovan, as a, now as a board member of EcoMaine, he will also be our liaison to the Energy Committee, which has been very, working very hard on dealing with solid waste management and our waste management policy within town, which is a significant part of our relationship, obviously with EcoMaine that processes our waste. So there's other synergies that I hope that you will see and feel with those appointments. I think they're very important in us being successful. I did want to mention a couple of changes and some special notes. First is that I did eliminate, because they were not approved committees or other positions by previous councils, but I think were situational, so I eliminated what was called the Employee Incentive Plan Review Committee. I believe that was something that came out maybe three, four years ago, really has not been a committee that has been formed over the last couple of years. And I think that with some activity that may happen within the Appointments Committee, we'll be able to incorporate, I think, the intent of what that committee wanted to on the longer-range plan as well. The other piece was really, it's an elimination, but it's really not, it's an absorption, and that is the school board liaison position. And speaking with each of you, as well as with Councilor Sinclair, who is the vice chair, I feel it a responsibility that as two leaders for you, and on this council, that we have a responsibility in building that relationship with our school board. We are the leaders for you in that relationship, we act, or at least present ourselves on that behalf, and I will always remain the lead on that, but Councilor Sinclair will also assist me with that as well, because it's, you should have confidence in your leadership to be able to communicate with our partners, and that is a significant piece. That is a fairly new position that was created, I think, three years ago, somewheres around that. So, you know, and I do want to mention very specifically that while I'm absorbing that responsibility in the leadership roles, is that Council Kiazou, who has been very effective in the past year, will remain a very strong advisor for us as well, because it's an important relationship. I also wanted to mention that the Communications Standing Committee was originally approved as part of one of our council goals, but never formally written or formulated in our rules and policy. I am going to ask that rules and policy formulate that on a permanent basis. It was originally positioned as a one-person kind of job, and I think it's very clear that at least this past year, communications was a very significant part of our goals. I have a feeling it's going to be a very significant part of this year's goals, and it's really too much, I think, for one person to take that responsibility. It will be a three-person committee that will become a permanent committee for the council going forward, because it should always be our focus, both from an internal and external basis, and kind of aligning again the synergies. Councilor Sinclair will be the chair of that committee for us as well, giving kind of the role with the school board as well. And then, sorry, I already made the note regarding communications. Last, I just wanted to say that I really think this is a slate that is going to allow us to achieve a lot. I think that given our past experiences and the depth of knowledge across the board is going to make us extremely successful, and we'll have some substantive results at the end of the year. So I really appreciate all of you contributing to that process and allowing me to make that recommendation, so. Council Sinclair?
In your motion, you just forgot the Public Safety Building Committee wasn't on that top.
And that's because it was actually appointed by resolution, so I would not need to reappoint that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're already there.
Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Sorry, this thing goes off very quickly. The last item, so there are, item number eight are no action, non-action items, there aren't any. Item number nine are standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. If you could speak to your previous appointments possibly, that would be great, or any decisions that you can announce for your new appointments, and I'll start with Council Donovan.
We, I had my first meeting as chair of the Metro Regional Coalition, and I'll report more on that as I get more familiar with what's going on.
Thank you. Council Rowan?
Yep, Scarborough Housing Lines met. We really had more of a strategic planning, goal-setting meeting. We did get some, troubling is too strong, but we got, we got some kind of rough news on, on the Eastern Village. The developer had been planning to meet his, some of his obligation with some one-bedroom apartments, and we were informed by, it was caught that those only count for half. So in the, in the current phase that he's under, he's only meeting three instead of six. It doesn't really materially change anything other than the fact that the developer's on the hook for 10 instead of seven. Then, but we did get the great news regarding Southgate.
Yes.
Which is fantastic. I'm sure you all recall, since we've been talking about both the housing a little bit tonight, that, that there were 38 affordable units that were approved two years ago that, that were waiting on main housing, housing authority to provide some, some tax credits. And we, we were able, our bid was, by the skin of our teeth, approved, and we were able to get a half million dollars in, in funding. So that's going to move forward. SEDCO also met, and we had a lengthy discussion regarding shortage of labor. It was the morning after the workshop last, last week. So, so one factor that was also discussed was a contributing factor is housing options in town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Foley, anything?
I do, actually.
Excellent.
So in anticipation of tonight's announcements of committees, I heard of there was going to be a Eastern Trail Alliance meeting earlier this week, so I attended just with the intent of meeting the folks at the table, working with Councilor Hayes to kind of catch up to speed on the work that they've been doing, and I'll continue to pick his brain as I take on that role. So it was, it was really nice to meet them, they've obviously done some great work. It was also fun to feel like there's something I can immediately have some connections with that will be helpful for them.
Thank you. Council Sinclair?
Do you want me to do Public Safety or do you-
Sure. Not good.
The Public Safety Building met last week, that's going well. We actually looked at, it was kind of frightening a little bit, the fire department, the Chief Thurlow presented us with sort of an overview plan of this area and what sites or buildings we have available. And it was a little sobering to look at that map and realize there's not a lot out there. And it was a little sobering to look at that map and realize there's not a lot out there, and there's not a lot of options for that Public Safety Building. We are going January eleventh, is it the eleventh? January eleventh, we're going on a tour, actually. We're all going up to Topsom and Topsom, Brunswick, Westbrook, Saco. Topsom, Brunswick, Westbrook, Saco. We're going to tour those buildings, and kind of, those are all newer buildings, meet with their chiefs and kind of see what works for them, what doesn't work for them. I always think that's really important. And so, we're going to do that. I think that was it for them, right? Not much else came out of that. And then, the only other thing I have, because our committees haven't really started meeting, was our communications, my communications group, we're going to hopefully set up a meeting for next week, not next week, the week after, and I'm hoping in between that time to meet with Tom and possibly SEDCO to talk about how we want to see communications move forward, what we think the best way for that to do, what the best use of our time will be, and how we see, since this is a new group, I understand it's going to go to rules and policy, but I would like to have some input on shaping that, and I'd like to get that information from Tom and SEDCO, since SEDCO is vital in the newsletter and things like that. So I think that's important. And if any of you have opinions on how you'd like to see communications moving forward, you know, email that to me, because I'm going to put something, an outline together, to send to rules and policy for them to sort of implement something. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, a couple things, when I'll kind of piggyback on the Public Safety.
Yeah, please.
The other piece that was really fascinating is they did share, by sort of a volume of places in town that we, that the emergency visits are made, and they were kind of in a bubble chart, so it really kind of centered around, you know, the main med center, that cancer center, there was a lot of visits there, some of the nursing homes are a lot, so it really helped kind of show where they're going, and so it was kind of fascinating. Two quick updates for me. Coastal Harbor met, they're doing some crane repairs, which is nothing new, they're always doing sort of crane repairs. But the thing that they did do, I had shared earlier that there's been a lot of conversation this year about the right use of, or the appropriate use, or how do we use the sort of pinpoint co-op area, how, you know, there's restaurants there, there's people that are recreational using it, commercial fishermen are using it. And so there was an ad hoc committee that was kind of formed about how can we do that, how can we provide parking, how can we provide recreational uses in there. Having their final meeting in January, and then they're going to come back with some recommendations, so that will probably be coming our way at some point in time, but that work's progressing. And the second thing is just kind of a heads up, we've, every year, the Shellfish Conservation Commission always has a heated conversation about licenses and what we should do. This year in particular, they're, it really is, they're pretty evenly divided down the middle about what we should do. There are some that feel we should not increase licenses, others that do. We're going to hear their recommendation, I think, next meeting. There may be some very engaged participant public comment, I would say, that might come our way, so just kind of a heads up that that's coming, so. That's it for now.
Thank you. Counselor Chiazo?
So, the school board met last week. They had their legislative workshop, if you will, in addition to their long-range planning report done. Several councilors were there, we were invited to participate at the table. I'll keep the politics out of it, but suffice to say, the, with question two, I believe it was, for the school funding, there's still a little bit of angst and consternation about how that's going to play out in Augusta, so stay tuned. It's obviously beyond our control and the school board's control, it's up to the legislation now to determine best way to move forward. So certainly if you have opinions, send them on up to Augusta, I'm sure they would just love to hear from us. The long-range planning report I found very interesting, only because I was involved in that process from the very beginning. I think there was a lot of good takeaways from the report issued by Harriman Associates, discussed with Counselor Hayes a little bit the format, and the information that was presented, both as a way to maybe do something on the municipal side for our existing infrastructure, but also as a way to maybe qualify some of the public safety building requirements. I thought it was a very intuitive format, if you will. So certainly hope that we could take some learnings from that as a council and as a municipality, and maybe piggyback on some of those efforts. I know it's been very positive on the maintenance side of things for the schools as well. Energy Committee met. We met Carrie Strout, the, I believe she's Sustainability Coordinator, I think we settled on that for her job title, as opposed to Jack of all trades. So she met, we got to meet her for the first time, very excited, she brings a lot of energy and a lot of knowledge to the process. I think Bill's going to very much enjoy working with her, and I know he's worked with her on a couple of other things as well outside of the committee. And they also went over doing the, I'm going to say the comprehensive review, but they're looking at revamping the energy policy as a whole, and using some of the STAR guidelines, if you will, as a basis for that, so there's going to be a lot of work for that. And Bill, I was told that part of me passing the baton on to you is that you are now responsible for Munchkins in the morning.
Okay.
So, other than that, that's all I have.
Great. Tom Manager, report?
Yes, I will give you just the high points. Just want to report back in, we've been successful in meeting with representatives from Senator Collins and King's office regarding the so-called Twenty-First Century's Cures Act. This was kind of a omnibus bill that was passed just about two weeks ago, frankly, that intends to address all sorts of problems in our society, one of which is the opiate addiction, and there's potentially as much as a billion bucks being put toward this. It appears as though it's going to flow through the states, and so there's still some, we'll have to wait a bit to see how that's going to flow, but hopefully the senators are working on our behalf to get that released sooner than later. So we're quite hopeful in that regard. Tomorrow, I will be attending a full-day tax mediation session. This is on the different tax appeals. We, both parties have agreed to have an independent mediator to help us sort through that, and so I'll certainly report. They were seeking, they were seeking that I, wishing that I had some specific authority, and I told them that I didn't have that, and so anything that, if we come to some tentative agreement, would be subject to bringing it back to you for approval, and that seems acceptable. And lastly, I think Counselor Baybine, Chairman Baybine's going to speak to the fact that we did receive the legal opinion on Avenue Two today, and I believe he, I'll be providing that as a public document tomorrow. We see no reason not to share this to all those that are interested, and I believe he has a proposed kind of process and timeline that will be an important part of that conversation, so folks know what to expect.
Anything else?
No, everything else can wait.
Actually, that's a perfect walk-in, so in receiving the opinion, and just to kind of be clear, the former Chairman Donovan had met with interested parties, so we want to make sure that we meet the expectations of those interested parties, and the promises that we made are kept. Part of that is making sure that this is a transparent, but an appropriate process. So with that, since we are in receipt of the opinion, we'll make that public tomorrow, like the manager said, so it will be on our website. I believe councilors have already received that in their email as well, and it, if you are asked, of course, you can distribute it, now that it's going to be public. I did want to mention that, so at the next meeting on January fourth, there will be an executive session for the purposes of consultation with legal representation under main statute four oh five point six point F, or is that an E? Which is concerning legal rights of the council regarding contemplated litigation with general discussion, and that will take place at six o'clock on the fourth. I would mention that, tentatively, unless there is conversation at a later time, we will have a public workshop in which we will make sure everyone is invited for February first, and then we can determine at that workshop what the next step is at that particular time, but those are the two tentative. I don't have a day, a time for February first, but it'll most likely be around the same timeframe that, you know, whether it's five or six o'clock, we'll do what we can to accommodate everyone's schedule. So I'm going to give you back that, if you don't mind. For individual comments, just a few comments. Bill, I did, Counselor Donovan, I did want to mention, there is one additional assignment that's not on that list, it's a subset. So as, now as a member of the EcoMaine Board, you will also, because Scarborough is a significant owner within, within EcoMaine, you'll also serve on the executive committee. It's a guaranteed, or it's our position that we must fill, so wanted you to be aware. It's certainly on the same day as the other meetings, but I wanted you to be aware of the responsibility with that as well. Wanted to mention, I have sent out emails to all of you for two items, if you could take attention to that. First is, or actually, there's three. First is I am wrapping up everyone's goals that were handed out to the sheets, trying to kind of consolidate that into a couple of working documents that will help us begin the conversation in setting goals for the upcoming year. But also, it will help us determine what step we take in having that conversation. And so the second email that I sent you is also a request for some opinion and response regarding that process, particularly, do we wish to simulate the same process that we had last year, asking what were the positives, as well as any concerns or negatives with that, so that we don't obviously emulate those problems again, as well as asking, do we even need to follow that same process since we were so successful, but also asking some other questions about how you would like to approach this. Tom and I did have a meeting this week with last year's consultants, Delphi Group. It was a very good meeting, in which we talked about last year, and kind of where we are, and what we might be thinking going forward, but I really need your feedback, whether to then engage them in this process, because they'll need to put together a proposal and recommendation around the timeline. I also indicated in that email two possible dates for workshops. The first is January ninth, which would start around five thirty, six o'clock. It would be a two-hour session, that is a Monday night. The second is also, the second is January eleventh. Again, whatever the timeframe that we select, it would probably be the same. I'm not suggesting we need both, I'm suggesting we need one. It depends on how you wish to go forward. If we're going to use the consultant, we probably will need both. If we're going to use our own resources, I think that we might be able to summarize that in one meeting, or at least have one, and then a backup if we need to follow it up with anything else, so we can, you know, I'm waiting for that feedback from all of you, so please respond. And then, second is that I actually want to continue something that I started last year. I think I've heard back from everybody but one, maybe two. So I had these coffee corners that came out of last year's communications discussion and goals, and so I had made a personal goal to sit down with each of you before sitting in this seat, and I'd like to actually continue that, just as a counselor, just to talk business and about the town, and so if you could do that as well. It's only two of us, so there's no disclosures or inappropriate meetings happening, and we never have more than the two, so don't want anyone to worry. We already talked about engaging the consultant. I did want to mention that regardless of which path we would take regarding our goals, I do want to make sure that we have an opportunity to look backwards and make sure that we all are comfortable in defining how successful we were last year, before we start going forward, so please take that into consideration. I did want to ask for each, for the committee assignments, I wanted to ask each of you in your respective roles to, if we could have at the next meeting, an announcement about when the standard meeting time and dates are going forward, so that we can make that public announcement for our own schedules, as well as for everyone else. I think that would be a good information point to include in your reports, if you don't mind. And just a couple of personal comments. First, so, because this is really my first meeting, so I apologize for the rough spots. Even though I've been around for a while, it's always a new role, and so I hope I can work out any of the rough spots that happened tonight, I know we will as you get more comfortable, it always does. Appreciate your patience through that. The other part is, I really wanted to say thank you. One of the things over the years I never understood is that once you become a chair, the chairperson, for some reason, it automatically allowed the chairperson not to serve on a committee or serve in a liaison. Now, there are other responsibilities and duties in trying to manage the issues, and not that I wouldn't love to be able to just do that, I really wanted to remain active in the committees as well as the liaison, so I really appreciate your confidence in being able to serve on the finance committee, which is, in my, over twenty years, I think it's the first time the chairperson has been able to sit on a committee, as well as in a liaison, so I appreciate that flexibility, and I know that the library trustees are very happy as well, so thank you for allowing that. I really wanted to say thank you also for the confidence in appointing me as the council chairman, I take it very humbly. I'm going to work very hard, and I promise that we are going to have a very successful year. I don't take failure well, so I guarantee you that it will not be a bad year. And in that, I, you know, in thinking through what type of comments, you know, you think about what's been published around, about our regional neighbors, without naming names, as soon as I give you the examples, you're going to know. You know, we talk about, some leaders talking about, literally and figuratively, giving out olive branches because of the difficulties they had, others talking about the need for respect and civility, and I hope that if anything, our mantra this year is, don't fix what's not broke. And the fact is, what we, what we did last year worked, and does not need to be fixed, and I hope that we expand upon that, because I know that we can be very successful with that. And although we did very well, the only thing I want to ask is that, that we believe in what we do, that we need to believe in what we do, and think hard about what kind of changes we want from our work, so that as we begin the process of assessing last year's success, and in setting this year's goal, we set a realistic understanding of what we need to do and what we want to do. And so I really want to say thank you with that, as well as, and I should have said this in the beginning, I really want to thank the school board, and the superintendent in particular, for reaching out and inviting us to the workshop. I thought it was a very good workshop. It was extremely informative regarding trends that the school department is facing regarding state issues. A lot of them are focused around funding issues that we were aware of, but there were other issues, as well as their long-range plan regarding facilities, so it was extremely, I thought it was a very good session, so I really appreciate that effort. And last but not least, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we get two weeks' time?
Sorry?
Oh, no, so moved.
I'm sorry, I thought you guys talked.
No, 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 so moved.
No, 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 I am so, my God.
I have one.
See, I am so sorry, I needed, you know, oh my God, I just jumped in. Did I really do that?
We could do the very same.
Oh my God, oh, that's because I did, oh my God.
I just so moved.
No, I am sorry, council comments? No, oh my God, that's because I was thinking about the reports, and I talked about reports. I apologize. I'm sorry?
If you have another chance.
I will not speak again, I promise. I will not speak again. Counselor Donovan?
I'll limit it to congratulations to Landry French Construction, which was in the newspaper today, as having received a governor's award for excellence. And they noted several other prominent awards, and this is an employee-owned company, and so obviously a company that's doing a lot right, and it's a Scarborough company, I wanted to recognize them.
Thank you. Counselor Rowan?
So I also wanted to thank the superintendent and the school board, I thought the presentation was terrific, very informative. I also wanted to mention Southgate again, and that, to remind everyone that not only was it providing affordable units, it was also preserving a historic and important building in town, and so that's another reason to be really grateful to the housing authority. And then lastly, the Police Department and the volunteer, volunteers in police service have been hanging out outside of Wentworth, helping with the drop-off recently, that, which is, was very well-needed. But, but, so I wanted to thank Officer Greenlaw and the volunteers for standing out in the freezing cold. But I also got to talk to Ed Libby the other day, he, it's really weird when people, I think it's the first time somebody, somebody actually knew that I was a town counselor by sight, and he wanted to say how much he appreciates the, the senior tax credit that we did this year. It's making a big difference for him, and he really wanted to especially thank you, Bill, and you, Craig, because you guys were really instrumental in making that happen, and he indicated that he'd be watching, so, Ed, hi, and that he would, just would have liked to come and do it in person, but it wasn't something that he was going to be able to do, so. Message delivered.
I'll be quick. Another thank you to the school board, and also the legislators who all attended, and fellow councilors. I thought it was really informative, eye-opening in terms of what they're looking at in terms of potential facility needs in the future, so that's also something I was thinking about tonight, and then that's Merry Christmas. Enjoy the time with your family.
Counselor Chiazo?
Oh, yeah, so I'll keep it brief. Happy holidays, Merry New Year, I wish you all. Happy holidays, Merry New Year, I wish you all a wonderful time with our families and friends, and a very prosperous and healthy new year. I'm looking forward to continuing the good work we've been doing, so. Happy holidays to everybody.
Counsel Hayes?
Same theme, Happy Holidays, everybody, enjoy.
Counsel St. Clair?
Can I make a motion? No, really, Merry Christmas, listen, let me get on my phone, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, I hope you have a great holiday. And I do want to say, and I know it's bragging, but I'm going to brag for a minute, I run a foundation in my son's memory, and we were awarded $5,000, $5,000, I'm so tired, $5,000 grant from Town and Country, actually, the credit union gave away $25,000 to local charities, and we were actually the recipient of a $5,000, the highest grant they gave, and it was a wonderful thing, and I just have to major kudos to Town and Country, not just because we won, but because of all of the things that they're doing in this community, which is huge right now, so, very proud of them, and it was wonderful to take a tour of their building, and it's, they're doing some great things there, so Merry Christmas.
And before the adjourn, I want to apologize, that will, it's that transition from, from committees to comments, so I apologize that will not happen again, happen again, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And who seconded?
Second.
I'll in favor? Thank you. Night, everyone.